... on a board to monitor and to provide governance over what is a public utility and a public resource. So I would like for to ask this, that's why I came to the executive committee, because you have purview over the administration and over the broader question of public boards and the code. And so I would like for this committee to research that and if you could provide some decisioning around that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. You raised some interesting issues. We have the benefit of having Councilmember Winston, who chairs City Utilities, on this committee, something that we can coordinate. And the other thing, too, is most of the boards and commissions, that's handled through committee on council. So we, and Councilmember back T R A, I believe, will be here later. So you have the benefit of all three of those committee chairs being on here, but we'll carry your point further. All right, any other folks signed up for public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on then into our agenda. Before we go into presentations, I understand that G M Biodari from the airport, is he here? Yeah, I understand that he's got a schedule conflict and we need to move his item up so that he can get to that. If there's no objection, I'll go ahead and pull up item number forty-five, which is twenty-three dash R thirty-two twelve on page, well, it's on page fifteen of the comments, but so I'll go ahead and read in that caption, "A resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor to execute a change order with Matthews Kelly J V for project number F C ninety-one forty-two cargo expansion site preparation two A and two B at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport in an amount not to exceed thirteen million dollars and zero cents. All services will be charged to and paid from fund numbers and account numbers as listed and for other purposes." G M Biodari, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Councilmember B Biodari, Aviation General Manager. This is another enabling work for us as we continue to work on expansion of our cargo facility. We're building a brand-new facility out there. And so there are certain sites that belong to the Federal Aviation Administration that we have to relocate to make provision for this cargo site. And so this is the site work to relocate three radar sites at a different location. And each one of these sites will compose of four towers fifty to seventy feet tall that the FAA was, will use to transmit communication to pilots moving around the airfield.
All right. Thank you, G M Biodari. Any questions? I do have one for you. So this is structured as a change order. Is it simply a, just kind of we're continuing to phase and as we enter the next phase, we're doing a change order versus a significant surprise in the project?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then this was also, I believe we had a paper in Transportation earlier that did the funding, associated funding for that?
Correct.
The two are related. All right. Any other questions? Motion from Shook to approve, sir. Second, seconded from Winston. Let's go ahead and open the vote, please.
Vote is open? Vote is closed?
Five yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. The item is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go back to presentations. First item is the fiscal year 2022 audit report. Yolanda Carr, Deputy CFO, I'll turn the floor over to you and your team.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Oh, I'll turn it over to you instead.
No, it's okay. I was just introducing Ms. Carr. Just introducing our Deputy CFO, Yolanda Carr, who'll be going over the FY twenty-two audit financials. This is for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, 2022. Ms. Carr, take over.
Thank you for the introduction, CFO Bala. We wanted to start with the audit reports that we produce. We have a lot of reports that we produce in the Department of Finance. We have the annual comprehensive financial report, which is referred to as the ACFER. We have that for Central, we have it for Watershed, as well as Aviation. In addition to that, we have the pension funds. We have general, fire, and police. We also have ancillary reports that we're required to submit to the state, E nine one one, most, T S P L S, we also have car rental, just to name a few. And we have the single audit, and really that's the audit of our federal funds. We're still working through that audit. We hope to have that report issued at the end of March. On this particular slide, page three, I wanted to talk about the revenues that we bring in for the city. We have 2.8 billion that we actually collected at the end of FY twenty-two. With that allocation, twenty-seven percent is allocated to aviation, two percent for solid waste, one percent for City Plaza. And we also have forty-six percent, which is general fund, all others, grant funds, E nine one one, just to name a few. In addition to that, we have twenty-four percent that's allocated to the Department of Watershed. And so in comparison to this, last year we had 2.5 billion. But again, this year we closed out strong with 2.8 billion, so wanted to share that. On this slide, and you may have seen this slide a few times, I know that CFO Bala actually presented this in FEC last month or the month before. We have 240 million for fund balance. This is the highest fund balance that the city has seen in history. And so we wanted to share that. With our fund balance, we typically have fifteen to twenty percent on hand to make sure that we can operate. Most of the time, best practices is to have three months. We have well above that. So we're in a really good position as far as our fund balance. We've had over twenty percent for the last ten years. So just wanted to share this good news once again. On the next slide, I wanted to talk about the Department of Watershed and their net position. When you look at it, you know, they have 3.8 billion, and this is their operating fund as well as their R and E fund. So some of these are tied up in the capital projects. But again, with the increase for the Department of Watershed, they had increases in revenues as far as the collections. We know that, you know, the businesses opened up, so we had more businesses utilizing water. We have conventions that came to the city. So we were in a really good position as far as the collections for Watershed. The next slide, I wanted to talk about the Department of Aviation, their net position. You can see that it's pretty consistent year over year. The unique thing about the Department of Aviation, they did receive funding from CARES and from the American Rescue Plan. And so they have been pretty consistent. You saw, we actually saw an increase in the demand for travel. And so with that, we had an increase in concessions, parking revenue. So we saw an increase with the Department of Aviation. And again, this represents their operating as well as their R and E fund as well. On this slide, we wanted to talk about the deficit funds. So with the deficit funds, this means that we have more expenses than revenues. We are familiar with solid waste. So solid waste went from 29.6 million to 43.6, and that's just because we had to settle litigation in FY twenty-two. Group insurance is pretty constant. We've had a deficit for the past few years, but we do have a plan of action. We have an MOU and we're going to come back before you to make sure that we right-size this fund. But all in all, it's really just health claims over the years and higher claims and costs. So that's what we've seen. It's not unique for the city. But again, this is what we see here, but we do have a plan of action, making sure we're addressing both of these particular funds. The next slide I wanted to talk about was pension. So we have the general fire as well as police. And if we look at FY twenty-two, we're kind of within that seventy percent range. And you'll see in the other years, we were a bit higher. And that's just because of the market, the assets of the market. The market was very volatile, but we do anticipate an increase in future years, but just wanted to bring that to your attention. So we think we're in a good place as far as with our pensions and the funding percentages that we have here. The last slide, I wanted to talk about O P E D, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is a fancy name for the medical insurance for retirees. So with that, we have a liability that we had to put on our books, and I think it's been about three to four years, this new accounting standard, Gatsby seventy-five. Again, this is related to the insurance for retirees. Our liability is 884 million. You'll notice that 617 million is for general government. We have a portion for aviation, 100 million, 127 for Watershed, and 40 million for the other enterprise, non-major enterprise funds. But the good thing about this, the liability last year was about a million, so it has decreased, 1 billion. So we're at 884 million. So we're in a good space. We are working closely with H R, just to figure out how we can make sure that we continue to reduce this and to be responsive. So at this time, I'll pause to answer any questions in conjunction with CFO Bala that you may have.
All right. Any questions for this, at this point of the finance report? I do have a question. I wanted to go back to the slide that has our, the general fund balance. Just a comment there, or clarification, we are at the highest we've ever been, but there was significant jump in the restricted portion from twenty-one to twenty-two. If I could have CFO Bala just kind of walk us through the source of that.
Yeah, so the restricted portion was a kind of a reallocation and thought process regarding the deficit funds. So the deficit funds for solid waste increased from last year, but also this year, the group insurance deficit fund is restricting the available balance until we get that MOU in place to rectify the deficit. So if you guys, as you know, the group insurance fund is a fund that everybody contributes and pays into. So when it accrues a deficit over time, it's just time for the city to go back and do a reconciliation process and charge back to each contributing fund how much of that deficit is, could be appropriated. And so once that is put in place, you will see that restriction taken on.
Okay. All right. So it's really kind of the treatment of that change?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Hillis, followed by Councilmember Overstreet.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Deputy CFO Carr. Maybe it sounds like there's echo because you and I just went over this presentation, but.
We did.
One of the questions I raised is around the solid waste services deficit. And we all know that they have historically ran deficits, Rob from the general fund. We hopefully fixed that last year with the, the new model that's been adopted. Number one, what does, you know, the current look forward when we start to see these twenty-three numbers populate? Because I know it's going to be different, but I also want you to consider that when we crafted this legislation and moved the common good services over to the general fund, we were, we received an estimate from DPW.
That's true.
Say 20 million dollars. So the look, the look back needs to say, hey, they either hit that nail right on the head, or, well, they said it was going to be 20 million dollars coming from the general fund, but it was really 30 million dollars. So if you could talk a little bit about the solid waste service, looking at the stuff that moved from the general fund and where we think the actual now solid waste service fee fund will end up.
Thank you for the question. So as you know, we passed the solid waste race last year. We did it kind of on a two-year commitment. And then we will come back to council with probably a more permanent structure. But as we kind of go into fiscal year twenty-three, what we are seeing is the solid waste service fees were probably a little bit overestimated. And then there's some efficiencies that solid waste is working on right now. So overall, we do believe that the, the fund should be in a slightly positive position this year, and the deficit shouldn't grow. But we will still need to discuss the efficiency report that solid waste is working through. We just transferred the 20 million dollars to the solid waste. There was a paper that passed FEC a few weeks back. So we're still in the middle of kind of really constructing and getting all the data points about what the future of solid waste services looks like, with the contribution from the general fund, frankly, needs to be. We're comfortable with the 20 million dollar mark now, but as you said, we'll probably come back and discuss what is the optimal position for general fund contributions. And that also included the mill rate increase that we adopted last year.
And just to be clear, the revenues or the expenditures were overestimated?
So the, the revenues were overestimated. The expenditures are going to come in less than we projected.
That is all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Overstreet, did you?
So I, I'm fine, actually. I'm, I'm good. But I did want to put an exclamation point that you all did take the time to make sure you met with individuals, each one of us, because I don't want anyone to think that we're seeing all of this for the first time and we have no questions, because we have plenty of questions.
True.
And during our one-on-ones. And I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
All right. Any other questions? All right, Ms. Carr.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I'll turn it back over to CFO Bala and to Doug Moses, who's the partner at Malden and Jenkins.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. I know we have some hard copies as well. If anyone needs some hard copies, I know the presentation is up there as well. Thanks for having us here today to present the audit results. It's our first year doing the City of Atlanta's audit, and we're very happy to have you all as a client. Before I get started, I just want to say hats off and kudos to the management of the City of Atlanta for doing a great job. First year, new auditors is always tough. We kind of got behind the eight ball with the delay in the audit contract being approved and, and also with the consultants assisting the City of Atlanta with Gatsby eighty-seven being, I think, approved in September or early October. So we kind of got behind the eight ball, but everyone worked very hard to meet the deadline, December thirty-first deadline. And so again, they're very committed. You even had the Director of Financial Reporting trying to jump on the call when she was heading to the airport to go on her honeymoon.
Wow.
And the Deputy CFO had to tell her to get off and enjoy her honeymoon. So that's the kind of commitment we saw here at the City of Atlanta, something we appreciate and something that shouldn't be taken for granted. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and start the presentation. Just a quick update about Malden and Jenkins. Again, we've been around for almost 110 years. Our governmental practice continues to be one of the largest niches in our firm, representing about 29% of the firm's practice. We have actually fourteen offices in six states. Our latest addition is in Raleigh, North Carolina. We audit over 650-plus governments. 150-plus of them received the GFOA, the GFOA Award in Excellence in Financial Reporting. And we're happy to have the City of Atlanta be part of that number of clients that received that award. Just like Ms. Carr alluded to earlier, you all prepare your own financial statements. If I had to guess, the number of our clients that actually prepare their statements is probably about 3%. And so it's, it takes a lot of skill set and a lot of commitment in drafting those statements. And you all did it. An annual comprehensive financial report for the city as a whole with your central office team, aviation, and watershed. And so again, that's, that's, that's awesome. All right. As far as the engagement team leaders, again, I was the partner responsible for the overall audit engagement of the City of Atlanta, have over 24 years of experience. James Bench was the engagement, and I'm out of our Atlanta office. And then James Bench was the engagement partner responsible for the aviation audit with over 20 years of experience. He's in our Chattanooga office by way of our Macon and Atlanta offices. Josh Carroll, who's here with me today, was the engagement director that oversaw the watershed audit with 16 years of experience. Will was the engagement senior manager, kind of overseeing the central as well as the watershed audit with seven years of experience. Then we had Tim Lyons out of our Columbia, South Carolina office, did the quality control review for the city as, as a whole, and he has 14 years of experience. Trey Scott out of our Savannah office, did the quality control review for the aviation. Christopher McKeller out of our Atlanta office with over 18 years of experience, did the quality control review for watershed. Allison Wester out of our Sarasota office, did the, was the partner responsible for the pension plan audits, both the general employees, police, and firefighters. And then Wade Sandsbury out of our Sarasota office as well, was the quality control reviewer for the pension plan audits. And then, just like Ms. Carr alluded to, the single audit is ongoing right now, and Hope Penaress out of our Macon office is the partner responsible for that audit engagement. We did utilize two minority subcontractors, and they're here for me today. We have Bambo in the audience, and then also Ruth Washington with Choice Business Solutions. And we're happy to have them on board. They did a great job, and we look forward to our continued working relationship. So I just want to kind of let you know all of the resources at a higher level that we provided for this, this year's audit for the City of Atlanta. So a lot of experience. And again, all of us spend 100% of our time doing governmental audits. We don't wear different hats. The only person as far as our partners that spend less time than 100 is Allison, and she's about 60% governmental. So we bring a lot of expertise to the field. On this slide here, I just want to say that there are other industries that we serve and other services that we provide other than your traditional accounting and tax services. As far as the financial statements, the financial statements are the responsibility of management. Our responsibility is to give an opinion that the financial statements are materially correct, and we've issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the city's financial statements as a whole. We did rely on other auditors' reports for Atlanta Development Authority or Vestalana, the Atlanta Fulton County Recreation Authority, as well as the Atlanta Housing Opportunity, Inc. Again, we relied on those other auditors' reports. We also issue clean opinions for aviation and watershed, ACFRs as well, and those are separately issued documents as well. And then we also issue clean opinions on the three pension reports as well. Main thing here I want to point out, as far as the report in accordance with the government auditing standards, the Yala Book Report, which will be included within the single audit report when it's released at the end of March. So we did have one finding that was considered to be a material weakness relating to audit adjustments that we proposed during the audit engagement. We'll talk about that a little later. There are also findings relating to the pension plan audit, too, similar to the, the findings from the previous year that were presented by KPMG. And so we've already met with the Pension Investment Board and went over the results of the pension audit results, and as well as we've met with the Audit Committee and went over all of the findings in detail. As far as new significant accounting policies, the city did implement a new accounting policy as it relates to Gatsby eighty-seven dealing with leases. And so you'll see in the footnotes where it talks about those policies. And again, this impacted the governmental activities, aviation, as well as watershed. As far as our relationship with management, we received full cooperation from management staff and others. There were no disagreements with management on accounting issues or financial reporting processes, or financial reporting matters, rather. As far as audit adjustments, we did propose some audit adjustments that did result in a finding, and we'll talk about that a little later. As far as past audit adjustments, there were some past audit adjustments as it relates to restating beginning balances. But management did agree to make those adjustments in the current year activity for fiscal year 2022. And so those adjustments were made. It's just that they didn't restate beginning balances. As far as our independence, we are independent of the City of Atlanta and its financial reporting processes. There are no fees paid to Malden and Jenkins for any type of management advisory services that will have impacted our independence as your external auditor. All right, the next few slides kind of go over some financial trends, looking at your general fund, fund balance over the five, over the last five years. And again, you can see that you had about a $53 million increase in your fund balance, going from 187 million to 240 million. So doing really well there. Next slide is looking at your fund balance as a percentage of, of total expenditures as well as transfers out. For June thirty, governments, you want to see anywhere from two to three months of reserve or anywhere from 16 to 25%. That's the rule of thumb. Now, if you all were a December year-end government, you would expect much higher reserves because you, by that time, you would have collected all of your property taxes, which would be used for the next year's operations. So you can see here, you all are at four months' reserve or 34%. And that's why the city hasn't needed to rely on a tax anticipation note to get you through those subsequent months until your property tax collections come in. So good job. All right, the next slide is looking at your sanitation and solid waste fund. Most solid waste funds are not cash cow funds. You know, it's not like an electric utility fund, which is truly a cash cow fund. But you would just hope that your sanitation fund would at least break even. And so looking at the last five years, you can see that your deficit has grown. And for your net position, it did go from 110 million last year to 100, almost 115 million in 2022. Now, you also have your inner fund balance, which is showing that the sanitation owes to the general fund. And that has grown over the years as well, coming to about 43.6 million as of June thirty, 2022. Management has put together a repayment plan, because normally, if you because normally, if you're looking at how it was reported in the previous year, it's just shown as an inter-fund balance or due-to-do from. And that shows that it would be paid within one year of fiscal year end. If it's not going to be completely paid within one year of fiscal year end, then it's either written off or you have to come up with a repayment plan and show it as an advance. And so management has decided to show that as an advance from other funds that will be repaid in about five or six years, starting in fiscal year 2024, and start paying down that advance about $6 million a year. And so again, hopefully you'll see that start trending down with that inter-fund or that advance from the general fund, as well as the deficit should hopefully be eliminated in the next few years. Our next slide is looking at your group insurance internal service fund. And most internal service funds, you would expect, don't have an accumulation of net position because hopefully you're charging enough to cover those costs. Like the last several years, you can see how the deficit has grown over the last several years, going from about $8 million in 2018 to about 43.8 million in 2022. And the advance or inter-fund balance that's due to the general fund has grown as well from 7.6 million to $38.3 million as of June 30, 2022. So again, management has come up with a repayment plan. The city is looking at making fundamental changes to the group insurance fund and certain fund-related budgeting practices that will hopefully eliminate that deficit and then also repay that advance from the general fund. So starting in fiscal year 2024, the city will be paying about $5 million a year to bring down that advance and hopefully eliminate that deficit in future years. Our next slide is looking at your governmental activities and net position over the last five years. Again, this is in thousands, and you can see that for the first time, the city has shown positive net position at the government-wide level for governmental activities, coming in at about $6.6 million. Like most governments in the past, when they had to implement Gatsby 68 dealing with net pension liabilities, when you had to show this full unfunded pension liability on your books, and then followed by Gatsby 75 a few years later with OPEB. A lot of governments saw that their unrestricted net position went to a deficit, and some governments saw their total net position go to a deficit, like what the City of Atlanta has experienced. And so being able to come out of that with those two major impacts to hit your net position, to now have positive net position for governmental activities is pretty good. So again, you're at 6.7 million, so hopefully that upward trend will continue. Next slide is looking at your net position for business-type activities over the last five years, and again, in the thousands. And you can see how your total net position has grown from $8.5 billion to $8.8 billion as of June 30, 2022. All right. So that concludes like the financial trends. There were some financial reporting changes in effect for 2022. The city's general custodial fund in previous years was shown as an agency fund. 2021, it was shown as a special revenue fund, but in following Gatsby 84 dealing with fiduciary activities, it needed to be shown as a custodial fund as part of fiduciary activities. And so we do have a restatement for that change in those funds to reflect that. And so you'll see a restatement of beginning fund balance for your non-major governmental funds, net position for government activities, and then the custodial funds. Like I alluded to earlier with Gatsby 87, again, that was implemented this year. You know, Gatsby was concerned about a lot of governments not being ready to implement Gatsby 87 due to all of the influx of federal grant monies and all of the complexities surrounding the accounting and reporting of those federal funds. Gatsby was concerned that a lot of governments were not going to be ready to implement this standard. So, and a lot of audits have been delayed because of that, but the City of Atlanta was able to avoid that and implement it in a timely manner. It had over 300 leases that they had to go through. So it was a lot of work on central aviation and watershed, but they pulled through and got it done, and the city was able to issue on time. Now we're going to the findings. Again, we had one finding citywide that deals with fiscal year-end closeout procedures. And so the first little bullet under that one finding deals with the OPEB, dealing with deferred outflows of resources pertaining to contributions, benefit payments made subsequent to the measurement date. And so most governments have the measurement date for determining what the liability is for OPEB one year in arrears. And so for June 30, 2022, the measurement date was as of June 30, 2021. Any payments made subsequent to the measurement date has to be reflected as deferred outflows of resources on your balance sheet, on your statement of net position. The predecessor auditors were relying on, and management were relying on, the actuaries to include that information in the reports. However, the actuaries could not get that information in a timely manner. So it's still up to the government to report what the deferred outflows are. Even if it's not readily available, you're allowed to make estimates. And so we got with management, and it did make an estimate of what the payments were subsequent to the measurement date. And the impact you can see here was about a $30 million adjustment to governmental activities, followed by $7.7 million for aviation, I mean, sorry, watershed, 5.2 for aviation, and then about 2.4 million for sanitation. So going forward, we do recommend management to get with the third-party administrators and see if they can timely provide that information to the actuaries or to the city while they're drafting the financial statements. And if it's not readily available, then the city can use estimates to determine what the amount should be recorded. Our next bullet here deals with grant reporting, dealing with Gatsby 33, dealing with accounting and reporting of non-exchange transactions. It's been around for a while. You know, prior to this standard, a lot of governments and even auditors kind of looked at the matching principle. You match the grant revenues with the granted expenditures. However, with Gatsby 33, it says if there's no eligibility requirement that's imposed by the grantor, then even if you haven't incurred any expenditures, you still recognize that revenue and you restrict fund balance for that grant purpose. And so we had to make adjustments to program income as well as the LMIG grant funding that was shown as unearned revenue on the balance sheet. And so you can see the adjustments of about 1.8 million to the Community Development Fund, about 15.5 million to intergovernmental grant funds, and then about 4 million to the Home Investment Partnership Fund. We also had to make an adjustment for accrued interest payable for about $5 million as of year-end as well. Our next slide here is with some adjustments pertaining to your, all of your tax allocation district funds pertaining to property tax revenues, receivables and unavailable revenues. We made some adjustments to kind of true up those balances at year-end. You can see the various tasks that were affected by those adjustments. Our next slide here, continuing on here with the one finding. As it relates to the aviation department, unearned revenue of about $5 million was still shown on the balance sheet. And actually, it was determined that the money was recognized in the previous year, so we had to make an adjustment to remove that activity from the balance sheet as of June 30, 2022. Watershed had an adjustment pertaining to accrued interest payable of about 9.7 million. And then also an adjustment of about 1.6 million pertaining to retainage payables that were still on the books that had been paid in previous periods. All right, and then for the pension, again, we had two findings here that covered all three programs or plans pertaining to census data as well as benefit payments. Again, we picked samples, and we had exceptions noted, whether, you know, the hire date or termination date wasn't right or it was missing information and things of that nature. We did check with the actuaries. We went over the exceptions with them to see if it was significant enough to change the calculation of the net pension liability that's reported in the city's act for, and it wasn't significant enough to change that. And so again, repeat findings similar to the previous years. I know you all have consultants helping the city out to get the records clean. I think they're doing a good job. It's just going to take some time to kind of comb through all of the records dating back from several years to get everything cleaned up. But I think the city is moving in a positive direction there. All right, so we had six management points. This is recommendations for improvements. These are not considered findings, but just a management recommendation. We also had some verbal recommendations as well that we sat down and went with management over. So this first one deals with project tracking and property tracking and review. And so we just noticed that some construction in progress items that were completed in the prior year that should have been moved over to depreciable capital assets, and so we had to make some adjustments there. Nothing material, but we do recommend the city review its CIP project status during the closeout period. And again, during the preparation of the financial statements, that's to ensure that you don't have any discrepancies there. We also noted the city received proceeds from two disposals of two real estate parcels that were not reported in the capital asset ledger or previously reported as land held for resale. And so adjustments were made there, and we recommend that the city annually review property and land listings as well as proceeds received from any property disposal to ensure completeness with the accuracy in the financial reporting. Second management point deals with accrued vacation or compensated absences. We noticed that the Medicare tax portion was not included in that liability, and so we just recommend that the city include the Medicare portion as part of the calculation for accrued vacation. Third management point deals with landfill post-closure liabilities and the need for updated engineering reports. Of course, the city has foreclosed landfills, and they're kind of relying on the EPA, EPD, Financial Assurance-Based Report for determining what that liability is. It's probably more of a conservative approach. The liability recorded as of June 30, 2022 is about $17.6 million. But having the engineers come in and do an estimate and evaluation may determine that that liability is too high and may need to come down. But again, we just recommend having the city reach out and have an engineering firm to do those evaluations. Dealing with the ARPA grant funding reporting, the Georgia State Charter of Accounts required that the American Rescue Plan grant funds be reported in its own separate special revenue fund. The city has combined that in with the carers' funds within a special revenue fund with the carers. They've tracking it separately by different call centers. But again, the Charter of Accounts require it to be in its own special revenue fund. So I believe management is getting with you all to get that approved to be able to show that as a separate fund in fiscal year 2023. Dealing with governmental fund budgets, of course, state requires you to adopt a balanced budget on an annual basis for your general fund and your special revenue funds. We noted three special revenue funds that did not have a budget. That is the Section 108 Loan Fund, the Atlanta Beltline Special Service District Fund, as well as the Atlanta Housing Opportunity Fund, which is a blended component unit. So we just recommend that you include those three funds as part of your annual budget adoption. All right, and the last management point here is on the watershed management, dealing with accounts receivables. We noted there's an account labeled AR Harbor Online that was reported as accounts receivable. But in further discussions with management, it was determined that it was a balance that represented online customer payments that had been reported as receipt in the billing software, but not yet deposited into the department's bank account. And so again, we recommend that you show these balances as cash or cash on hand or deposits in transits and not reflected as accounts receivable at year-end. All right, you know, Gatsby continues to be very busy. You know, when I started back in 1999, the biggest standard was Gatsby 34. And now we're at Gatsby 101. You know, we're proud to say that one of our fellow partners, Joe Black, is now the chairperson of Gatsby.
I'm sorry, Joe Black liked the movie?
He may think so.
No, Joe Black is...
But yeah, Joel is the new chairperson of Gatsby, and I'm always kidding with him, saying hopefully he can cut down on the number of new standards, but he always says that he's just one person, part of the board, so. But the main two I wanted to point out here is on Gatsby 91, dealing with conduit and debt obligations, which is applicable for fiscal year 2023, the current year that you're in. Under the old standard, they allow more flexibility. If you had conduit and debt that's issued by the Development Authority to third parties, it's not reflected in your books as debt. Again, it's debt of others. And sometimes a lot of the authorities have issues in determining what the outstanding balance is at year-end. And so they're allowed, under the old standard, just to disclose what the issuance amount is. Under Gatsby 91, you can no longer do that. You have to report what the outstanding balance is as year-end. Through Vest Atlanta, you all have about $2.5 billion of conduit and debt. I believe the majority of that last year is shown as issuance costs. And so we are recommending that city management, along with management of Vest Atlanta, kind of work together to make sure that they're in a position to show at June 30, 2023 what the actual outstanding balance is. And so I've been recommending that my clients almost treat it as if it's going to be your own debt. You're sending confirmations out. You're working with the trustees to determine what that outstanding balance is, kind of get ahead of the game. Then the last one I want to talk about is Gatsby Statement Number 96, deals with subscription-based IT arrangements. This is very applicable or similar to Gatsby 87 dealing with leases. And so if you have like a cloud-based IT-type system that you're utilizing or leasing, you have to recognize an asset, the right-to-use asset, as well as lease liability, very similar to Gatsby 87. So we are recommending that the city continue to use the consultants that they use for the implementation of Gatsby 87 to assist with 96 as well. So to kind of get ahead of the game there. But this will be applicable for fiscal year 2023. All right, we're almost done. Notice a lot. So coming out of the recession in 2008, you know, a lot of governments did a lot of cutbacks, and one of the things they cut was going, sending their staff to training. And so we started that next year providing free continuing education classes to our clients free of charge. We tried to do it four times a year. You can earn up to 28 hours of CPE credit. You can see the various topics that we cover. Coming out of this recent pandemic and dealing with all of the complexities of the federal grants, the accounting and reporting of such, we decided to hold more than just four. I believe last, in 2021, we probably held about eight to 10 classes to keep our clients abreast of all of the changes and things that are going on to make sure they're be ahead of the game. And so again, if you can see the various topics that we provide, if anyone wants to be added to the invite list, just let me know. My email, as well as pages, email, emails are at the bottom of this slide. Just to kind of go over some other, real quickly, some other services that we provide. We do have a group that specializes in IT cybersecurity solutions. They do cybersecurity framework engagements, system vulnerability assessment engagements, as well as penetration testing engagements as well. We also have a governmental advisory practice that's led by David Roberts. And again, if you wanted to have some type of operational assessment done or a performance audit done, we have several clients that has engaged them to do a, like for instance, Gwinnett County had them to do a county-wide operational assessment. City of Forest Park, smaller government, had them to do a city-wide operational assessment as well. It was well-received, over 300 recommendations on how they can improve best practices and things of that nature, and how they can get there. And so if y'all are ever in need of such an assessment done, just let us know, and we'll put you in contact with David Roberts. That concludes my presentation. Again, it was an honor and pleasure to provide auditing services for the City of Atlanta. Again, your management team have done a great job. I know it was tough, late nights, early mornings, but they got through it, and we look forward to next year, and I know it's going to be even better.
All right, before I open up for questions, I want to give the CFO a chance to, if you wanted to respond to any of the findings, if you were in agreement and...
Yeah, no, I, we hashed it out a long time ago. So we are definitely in a place of agreement right now. I do just want to take the time to acknowledge Mr. Voss and the Malden &amp; Jenkins team, who, as mentioned before, we had a real short window of when these engagements generally begin, to get it all done by December. And it took a lot of dedication, hard work, and professionalism on their part to get us to the... to the closeout period and in the end of December. And hats off, of course, goes to Manon Noble City Auditor's team and everybody else who makes sure that this engagement was in place for us to proceed. But we look forward to, you know, continuing collaboration, continuing work. I think everybody has the same vested interest here, just putting the City of Atlanta in a much better place going forward. I know where Atlanta, I've been here for 11 years, so I'm pleased with the findings that we're seeing now versus where they were years ago. And so we're heading in a much better direction and like always, new information, new thought processes, new ways of conducting business is good for the City of Atlanta, is good for the taxpayers and the stakeholders of the city. So we appreciate their hard work here.
Thank you, CFO. All right, council member Overstreet, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I also want to acknowledge the fact that the recommendations that were made, we actually thought they were good recommendations and are actually implementing them. And I'm not sure if that was clear, but I want to make sure everyone knows that, that you were, your team was very thorough and we absolutely, and qualified. I mean, I got all of that today. But just want you to know that us as council, we know that the recommendations were taken in a good way after you hashed it out and implemented for the city.
Yes, yes, I forgot to mention that. Yes, they've, they've jumped on it ASAP on the recommendation, so that's very appreciative. A lot of times they kind of put it on the back burner, but some clients do, but not the City of Atlanta.
You will see a couple of pieces of legislation in today's committee meeting that are for those recommendations. One is for the ARPA transfer, and you'll see one for the landfill consultant engagement as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shook.
Thank you for the audit. I'm always tempted to ask what y'all do for fun.
You can ask him the same question.
It's always interesting to see what new I see when they look at the books, because whenever a new firm comes in, it's always a little, we have to kind of recalibrate ourselves because this is always a little bit different. I want to thank the finance committee, I mean, the finance staff and your team, because this is a good audit. And if there's people here who aren't sure about that and who want to see what a bad audit looks like, you can borrow from my bound collection in my file. I've seen some of the more legendary ones. Thank you for reminding me about Gatsby 34. That was Old Testament style event that we had to live through. But I know no action is required here, but I wanted to thank the finance team for meeting with us and to just state what Ms. Overstreet stated. I think those led to a whole lot of questions and a whole lot of discussion that people aren't seeing here and they might be wondering about that, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shook. I want to echo the appreciation. I, during my last tour of duty, I do remember when we dreaded this coming out, and it was everything that came out was significant versus this feels more like fine tuning. It's just a different perspective on interpretation of Gatsby or the law. And I appreciate the fact the finances jumped on it already and that we're basically just trying to kind of have a meeting in the minds and then set up success for the 23 one. The training I was particularly intrigued by, is that typically in person or are y'all doing it?
It used to be in person, but when the pandemic happened, we went virtually and we got more participants doing it virtually. And so right now it's still done virtually.
Yeah, I think it's a fantastic offering and to the extent that the finance department, y'all have capacity to do it, I know that you're always pushed for time, but I would take advantage of that because it's, like you said, it's one of those things that we often lose during belt tightening and it's so important to make sure that we stay on top of all those. All right, council member Bakhtiari. Football question.
Thank you. No, just like a couple of small follow up questions because I'm going to take this home and read it. More in depth, and I just want to state for the record that I love the visual of council member Shook sitting in his office just screaming at crappy revenue reports that he has. Why you keep those? Who knows? But because they're crappy. Just a couple of follow up questions. I just, this is, I'm new, but based on everything we've gotten so far, they're right. This is like, I really appreciate the amount of information that's in this. I've actually learned a lot from this report. I did just have a couple of follow up questions. I was wondering, the AR Harbor Online in regard to watershed? When I mentioned the money that was sitting undeposited, I was curious as to how long that money sat undeposited before it went into.
That's a good question. I'm going to turn to either my director, Josh, or either someone at watershed to comment on that because I'm not sure.
Whoever it is, would you mind coming up to the mic? Thank you.
At the mic, at the mic.
Just so the public can hear, I can hear you just fine. Thank you though.
At the mic. And introduce yourself.
I know, it's very scary.
Philip Shaw, I'm with the Department of Watershed Management Director. And it usually lasts, it rolls continuously, so it may last a day or two or three, but it's a rolling number of changing, you know, coming in and going out.
Okay. I appreciate that detail. I was expecting something a lot worse, so I'm glad to notice just a couple of days. And I was wondering, the mention, the part on the recommendations where it says that I don't know how to pronounce it, what it's council member Shook say, Gatsby?
Oh, Gatsby, yes. Government account standing support.
Okay. For Gatsby, for the piece that you mentioned where it's still other matters that are being considered, going under, the piece on going concern uncertainties and severe financial stress, that the report that's estimated to be out in mid 2025, is that also looking at how we may be preparing, how, what type of standing we are preparing for the next recession? Because I would say based on where we stand economically, it's not too far off. So I was curious as to if this had recommendations on that or if it audited what our standing was or how we could better prepare.
Yeah, it's certain disclosures, additional disclosures that will be required if there's a going concern issue. Not too many governments have those. There have been some that filed bankruptcy and things of that nature. So let's say, for instance, your general fund had a deficit of $200 million. That's your main operating fund. There might be some issues there that you would have to disclose in your footnotes about potential going concerns as it relates to that. So just additional footnote disclosures that'll be required.
And so I'm guessing, and the exposure draft on this topic is expected by mid 2025. That will contain more information that we're able to look at in terms of.
Yeah, so it's in the exposure draft, and so they're still hashing out different things. A lot of times what Gatsby will do is send that exposure draft out to the profession, the CPAs and allow time for them to comment. So all the stakeholders and individuals can comment on it and provide certain, you know, recommendations. And so they'll go through that exposure draft and then once all of that is kind of hashed out, then it'll become a standard.
Okay. Question for you, follow up questions? Would it be okay? I think you said contact information maybe.
Yes, dmoses@mjcpa.com. You can call me, email me, we can have one on ones.
Really brave of you to say that into the mic, so thank you. I really appreciate that. I have a lot, this, this honestly, you've taught me a lot sitting here, so thank you for that. And also for the record, I wanted to wish CFO Bala a happy early birthday.
Awesome, happy birthday.
All right, thank you. If there are no further questions, we'll thank you and then send you and your team along on your way. And we look forward to hearing back from y'all the next cycle.
Thank you all, y'all take care.
Have a good day. Okay, if there's nothing else on that presentation, there is no action we need to take. Let's go ahead and move on to the next presentation, which is an update, Georgia General Assembly update, Kenyatta Mitchell.
I am not this tall. So good afternoon, everybody. My name is Kenyatta Mitchell, and I am the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, along with my colleague, Deandre Everhart. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak to you this afternoon and provide an update on what's going on in the General Assembly. So slide two, get to that. We have a new state and federal government affairs partner for both these sessions. On the state level, on both state and federal, we've retained Holland and Knight, but we've added Impact Public Affairs. A lot of y'all know the folks at Impact, they have a stellar reputation. They know the City of Atlanta quite well, and they are perfect assistants to myself and to Deandre during the legislative session. We also added the group, I don't know if y'all are familiar with the group. The group is a DC government affairs firm. They are a minority firm. And the way that they work, as well as Impact, is they work very collaboratively. A lot of government affairs firms, you are assigned a person and you have that person. But if anything were to happen, you don't have that appropriate backup. These firms have allowed us to have an appropriate backup, so it will definitely be, help the city be in a much better position now and into the future. And this new model has already provided tangible benefits to us, so we're very appreciative of them. The next item I want to bring up is our new democracy fellow update. As y'all recall, several months ago, you all voted on this fellow. We, we had a temporary fellow during the legislative, during last year, during the election, and they helped with nonpartisan get out to vote. The funders at Baltimore Corp. were so impressed with our work that they are giving us for free a professional for, for an entire year. My colleague, Deandre, worked on this. And during this pilot, our fellow will build our capacity to mobilize civil engagement by encouraging voter participation. As you all know, voting is but one aspect of having an engaged citizenry. They will provide us with the capacity to innovate and help us by removing barriers and service connectors to elevate all of those groups that have been helping us on the local level thus far. Our fellow has accepted the job and he is going through a background check right now. Once that is complete, I will schedule a time, if any of all want to speak to him, to talk about some ways that they can help engage the citizens in your districts. This slide is very tiny, so I'm going to kind of go through it quickly for you. These are all of the grants that we were a part of in the last year. So there's one grant that I do want to talk a little bit about, that I'm very excited about, which is in council member Dozier's district. Our WOW team, and I got that from our, our transportation commissioner, our WOW team of senators of Warnock, Ossoff, and Congresswoman Williams brought us $30 million for Safe Streets. I don't want to undersell this one. If you look at the accidents in these two corridors, you'll see, you'll find pages of tragedy. I firmly believe this grant will save lives. And I firmly believe that, well, I'm very thankful to the federal DOT for thinking that we're worthy of this award. Now, there's something very large missing here, and this is for Councilman Overstreet, the Campbellton Road BRT. We applied for a mega grant and we weren't successful. That does not mean we're going to stop applying. We're not going to apply for a mega grant next time around, but we are going to apply for a small starts grant for that Campbellton Road. It more closely qualifies and more closely matches the qualifications for that grant. So you have a better opportunity of securing it, but I have not forgotten about Campbellton. I just want to make sure that that is on the record. So I know y'all are wondering when I'm going to talk about the General Assembly. Here we are. So the most important, let me start with this. Today is legislative day 19, so I should be across the street, but I'm here with y'all. It's day 19 of 40 day session. Crossover day is day 28, which is March 6th, and we will all get our lives back after March 28th. There is no single item that the General Assembly works on that is more significant than the budget. The state right now has a record high surplus, much like the City of Atlanta, at least relative to the history of the state, and has a very well funded reserve. The single biggest use of state surplus this year is going to be an income, income tax refund of $250 per person, $500 per joint, and property tax relief of $500 per homestead. Beneath this number, the budget significantly increases state support for K-12, K-12 education across programs, including teacher pay raises. It enhances state support for higher education scholarships and funds a range of new economic development and workforce priorities. Not to pick on Councilman Dozier because he's not here, but I believe the last time I was here, he mentioned the fuel tax suspension. And this budget fills the revenue grant, revenue gap that was created by that exemption. So as y'all recall, we did not pay for gas tax on the state level from March 18th to January 11th. This budget refills that so the state DOT is whole again. The next item, and the thing I spend the most of my time on, are the two Buckhead bills. I will be leaving here actually and having a conversation with some folks across the street about Buckhead bills. Just so you know, Senate Bill 113 provides for the transfer of infrastructure, which is very problematic for the, to create the new city. And House Bill 114 will incorporate or create a new, the city of Buckhead City, which does not roll off your tongue. The next item I wanted to bring up is sports betting. Now, if y'all have been paying any attention to the General Assembly over the last decade, this has come up probably every year. Why I'm bringing it up now is it has the highest likelihood of going across the finish line either this year or next, and this is why. There was a recent, Harold Melton, our previous Supreme Court, Chief Supreme Court Justice, who is now in the private sector, wrote a letter saying that sports betting no longer has to be a constitutional amendment, which means it could pass the General Assembly with a simple majority. This would provide additional money for Hope Scholarships because it will be under the lottery system. So I want y'all to keep your eyes on this bill. It has the highest likelihood in the last 10 years I've been following it of passing. Another really bad bill is a piece of homeless legislation that, that actually passed the committee, but is going before the Senate. This homeless bill, and I don't know why the General Assembly is obsessed with making a tragic situation somehow and making it worse, but they want the city, they want to stop the city from adopting any policy that discourages, and there's no legal definition for discourages, or prohibits the enforcement of anti camping ordinances. It would also prevent the city from prohibiting or discouraging, which again, has no legal standard, police officers, city solicitors from enforcing this ordinance. In short, this will force us to arrest homeless folk, homeless people, which is three times more expensive than providing services. So what they want us to do is the most costly, least effective method, they want us to employ it. The city, they said, this bill will also enable any citizen to sue or bring a civil action against us if they feel that we're not doing a proper job. This is a bill that we're fighting. This is a bad piece of legislation, it'll be going before the Senate. Another piece of legislation that came across the finish line after I said this to y'all is Tuesday, and this is a good piece, House Bill 404. So if you've been watching, if you've been reading the AJC, there was a dangerous dwellings expose that, that came out. House Bill 404 will go about rectifying some of the issues that create bad housing situations. My friend at the state capitol, Casey Carpenter, is the lead sponsor of this bill. If there's any way you all could support, I hope you do. The Speaker is for this bill, House leadership are for this bill, and I think it will go a long way towards giving renters enhanced rights. And I will thank you and stop for questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mitchell. We got a queue of questions here. First up, Liliana Bakhtiari.
Are you surprised? Couple of questions. One, extremely happy to have you as in this position. As you know, I think you are probably the best, one of the best lobbyists in the state. That's my opinion.
Okay.
So I had a couple of questions for you. The piece that you actually mentioned, well, one first, sign and die is scheduled for March 28th?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. And for anyone who doesn't know what that is or that's listening, sign and die is the day.
Latin for the end of day, which means that that's the final day of the legislative session. So we like to be classy sometimes and use Latin.
And would you also please explain for anyone listening what crossover day is and what that means?
Crossover day is the last day that a bill could successfully cross over from one chamber to the next. That is a little bit of a misnomer because we can always strip bills and add new items to bills. So theoretically, yes, it's the last day, but in practice, I've yet to see it actually work on every bill.
Can you remind me if we're at the beginning of our two year cycle or at the end?
Beginning, this is the first day, the first year of biennial.
Got it. And then the, the portion that you mentioned about getting people to come down and lobby, I would love to talk to you about perhaps hosting a citizen lobby day with the city? Yeah, I know how much you would love that, but lobbying workshops, so I will talk to you about that.
Oh, absolutely.
In my district.
Absolutely.
Additionally, I just wanted to ask for the record, the Buckhead bills, are any of the representatives, I'm sorry, senators that are dropping that, do any of them live anywhere near Buckhead?
So the closest one lives in Way North Fulton. They have one person in Fulton, the sponsor lives about 200 miles away. So they're, they're locals, locals.
Okay. As in they live in the state of Georgia, but not necessarily?
They're in the state of Georgia, yes.
The city itself.
Yes.
Okay. The other piece, I appreciated the bills that you did mention that you're watching. I was, been keeping an eye on the truck weight bill, the bill that would, that I believe that there would allow for some of the timber trucks that come through our city to have a functional weight.
Yes, 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 yes.
I'm particularly concerned about that because I don't believe our roads or our bridges can take that. Is, where is that in?
No, it passed the committee.
Okay.
That is another bill, and I, I mean, honestly, I could bore y'all all with all the bills that were. the bills that we're tracking. That's another bill that we're tracking with the state DOT. Think about the extra weight along with the fact that we're electrifying our fleets. So electric vehicles by themselves are heavier.
Yes.
And so the extra weight on roads with our climate change that's going on with our wetter winters and hotter summers also degrade roads. So altogether, this is very detrimental to the future of the roads in the City of Atlanta.
And I believe, was I correct in assuming that at one of the hearings, that one of the GDOT Commissioner, I forget the name of the person's position?
Russell McMurray.
Thank you. Came out and said no, that they did not want to see it?
Yep.
Okay. Well, at least there's some light there.
Well, usually that's helpful. This year, it was not. So we need, we are reassessing the way that we go through trying to fight this bill.
Okay. And then I, my understanding is that a refer bill might also be dropping?
Yes. So Ed Sitzler is going to be dropping a refer bill. I just found out about that yesterday. It has not gotten a bill number yet. Almost no one is in favor of that.
You state.
But there are 20 sponsors on the Senate side, I'll say that.
Could you state for the record what the refer bill is?
The refer bill is, is supposed to, and I say that pejoratively, mirror the federal refer statute. They're always different. No one is in favor of, I won't say no one, let me take that back. Leadership is not in favor of divisive bills. This is a highly divisive bill, and this is a bill that will codify discrimination. It would also outlaw our nondiscrimination ordinance in the City of Atlanta. So all of the air, all of the cities and counties that have worked hard, and I was for Georgia, at Georgia Equality for years, we worked hard for these nondiscrimination resolutions. All of those at the, at the signature of the governor, although I doubt he'll sign it, would go away.
And, and I'm correct in assuming that not only is this morally horrific, that it would also affect business in our state?
Yes, which is, which is why the Metro Chamber is fighting so actively against it, which is how I was able to find out about it initially.
Am I correct in assuming that the same legislator that introduced the abortion ban is the individual that introduced this paper?
That is correct.
Someone should have hugged him when he was a child. Also, I would like to, also, where are we with the anti-trans bill?
So there are two anti-trans bills. Which one are you referring to?
I'm asking if any of them have gotten any traction at all.
They have not, but again, you have to watch everything as if it can go to the end. So they have not gotten traction, no.
And my, two last questions, and I promise that I'll move on. The second to last, are we, should we be preparing ourselves for another anti-choice bill?
No.
No?
Not that, I, I would not expect anything to go across the finish line.
Okay.
It, our General Assembly was able to get voted in because they stayed feeling with infrastructure and jobs and all of the things that people are in favor of. Divisive bills, as we saw in the State of Michigan and other states, that flip their General Assemblies are not helpful to them.
Okay. And my last question, finally. I've noticed that the governor had mentioned that he wanted to encourage for municipalities to relax requirements around housing and build more housing most recently. Has there been any sign that the governor intends to remove any of the preemptions that keep us from doing what he asked us to do?
So, no, I have not heard of anything like that.
I just want to make sure because it seemed like a political statement, but in fact, the state could tell us how, what colors to paint our walls if they wanted to, and yet it doesn't seem that they've moved any of the preemptions to do anything like allow us to build more housing or more affordable housing or utilize other resources or, I don't know, allow for there to be rent control or caps on rent. So just wanted to, that's not a you, obviously.
That's not a me.
But I just wanted to state all that for the record for anyone who might be listening, that even though that statement was said, nothing has allowed us to relax our requirements because the state won't relax theirs.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Overstreet.
Yes. Thank you. I just want a little more information about the SB 62, the homeless legislation. I'm really not grasping what the main issue is and what they're trying to implement.
So there's an organization called the Cicero Foundation that's been going around the country, trying to take homeless people from where they are in cities, which is kind of scattered, to consolidate them into one location that doesn't have proper sanitation necessarily. There's no regulation for that. There's no regulation for treatment. There's no regulation for wraparound services. So all the things that we know from history and from experience that assists with homelessness is not required in this bill. So the bill's main intent is to take homelessness so, and put it away so we can't see it.
Got it.
It, it, there's no intention on helping people or supporting or anything like that.
So, as you were going through it the first time, that is what I envisioned.
That, that's, you're right.
But I was hoping not.
You were hoping for better?
Yes, I was hoping for better, because I wanted it to be something that we could actually look into or consider. Like, I've had conversations with Georgia State University about doing a study, because once upon a time, there was a federal initiative that helped with not just homelessness, but mental health and other issues, so that it was a federal budgeted situation. So I've talked to Georgia State University in trying to figure out who's really responsible for homelessness. I know the City of Atlanta's services are not. You know, that's just not in our budget. Where it's not a homelessness in the City of Atlanta is not a City of Atlanta budgeted item. So I wanted to talk to Georgia State about who's responsible to do what around homelessness, because this is what they do as an entity. They, you know, send, they do the proper research and, and have recommendations. I think that we're at a place now where that's what's needed, because what happens is everybody's throwing spaghetti at the wall, and whoever picks that spaghetti up is the one that's going to cook it. You know, and I don't want it to be pieced together that way for the sake of not just the City of Atlanta's citizens, but everyone.
Right.
It's just not something that we should be doing. So I don't see how, you know, the, the hurting of the homeless and putting them all in like a tent city is the answer. I don't see that at all, because for all the reasons that you stated. I know the mayor of, of California, of, I mean, the mayor of Los Angeles, said that it's a state of emergency.
It is.
That's what I think Mayor Bass did on day one. You know, maybe that's where we are too. Because what we can't have is the state telling us how to handle our homeless situation, and we come up with answers like that.
So I will say this, that thankfully, our situation is not the same as LA.
Right.
LA has the largest encampment in the country. Their slum, yeah, so it's, it's quite a bit different. We have made strides towards alleviating our homeless situation. Unfortunately, Councilwoman, a lot of the things that mitigate homelessness, there are some things for veterans, some things with AIDS, for AIDS, people with AIDS, HIV. There's a different bucket of who gets what assistance where and how, and that's part of the issue.
Who divvies that up?
Right.
And who decides? Right. So, I don't know. We don't have the answer today, obviously.
No.
But just wanted more information about that SB 62 to see if it was what I was envisioning.
It's, it's that and probably worse.
Oh, yeah.
And Councilmember Bakhtiari just stated too that there was a commission or task force or a committee that was put together last year to make recommendations to?
They did.
It sounds like this is not even aligned with any of the findings of that.
So there were three recommendations that were in line with the folks who signed on to this bill out of the, I think, 15 recommendations, and they chose these as their, to, to become a bill.
That was my first?
No. Well, the committee was, but this legislation was not. And it, the vote was on by part, was on partisan lines. The, the Dems voted against it and the Republicans voted for, on that particular committee.
Councilmember Hillis has the floor now.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the presentation. Are you familiar with SB 153 yet?
Which bill is that?
It's the, I guess it's being called the Stadium.
Oh, yes.
Public Safety Stadium Surcharge.
I am. There actually, there's a hearing for it, I think at 4 o'clock today.
Yes, I just wanted to make my colleagues familiar since it was referred to FEC. We, I did a walk-in to Public Safety on Monday to show support that bill. One of the sponsors, Senator Albers, requested that. So basically, what it would do, for those that were, I guess the two that were with me last term, I introduced a bill in 2018, looking to study this. We ended up not passing it, because we knew, even if the study recommended it, conflicted with state law the time, preempted, it would set up the framework for cities to be able to impose a surcharge at event, ticketed events at locations that have over 9,500 seats. So a few places here in the City of Atlanta, I know there's one in Savannah, Macon, a few others, but hoping to get that bill passed so then the city can take action, because they're estimating it could produce up to somewhere between $10, $12 million in revenue for the city. That would be specifically allocated to public safety resources like fleet purchases, you know, dire nature fire trucks and police cars, as well as precincts and fire stations. So we'll get to that in the, in the agenda, but I just wanted to put that on everyone's radar.
Yeah, and honestly.
Fight for us over there. As you mentioned, I think it's in Senate Finance here in a little while, so.
It will be, and it's a high likelihood it's going to pass out of, out of the committee with flying colors. No, probably pass through both chambers as well. I can't imagine anyone saying anything against that bill. Honestly, I would have spoken for it if I, if I weren't here.
Much.
Other questions for Ms. Mitchell? As I say, let's go ahead and the Senator back over so she can go continue fighting the fight for us over.
Thank you.
At the Gold Dome. So thank you, and we'll see you next time. All right. Any other comments on the presentations? Okay, let's try and move quick. We do have a long agenda today, so I'm going to try and move us quickly through the legislative items. First up is the Consent Agenda Ordinances for First Reading. Ms. Kempson Wright, if I can have you sound those two items so that we can receive them and then dispense with them next cycle.
Item number one is 2301100, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee to amend ordinance 2001396, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on June 15, 2020, and approved by Operation of Law on June 24, 2020, by adding an additional funding source on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation. All of the parts of the ordinance to remain unchanged and for other purposes. Item number two is 2301101, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2001050, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on February 3, 2020, and approved by Operation of Law on February 12, 2020, by adding an additional funding source on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation. All of the parts of the ordinance to remain unchanged and for other purposes.
All right. Thank you, and we will see these again next cycle. Ordinances for second reading, first item is 23-01062, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee to authorize the city on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs to accept a donation of funds to the Public Art Trust valued at $115.0 to support the Public Art Trust for art conservation. The donation to be deposited into public trust account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Mr. Witherspoon.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Robert Witherspoon, representing the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs. This ordinance will allow the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs to receive a one-time donation of $115 to support the city's conservation and maintenance program for public art. The donor's name is Terry Thall of Denver, Colorado. This donation was initiated after the city provided a free downtown public art tour, and one of the participants was impressed and wished to support our, our conservation program. Thank you.
All right. Questions for Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Hillis?
I don't think my question necessarily for Mr. Witherspoon, but in general, probably to law, why in the hell are we wasting people's time and paper to expend $115?
It's to receive, it's a donation.
Well, exactly. We can't, the city can't take a $115 donation without legislation?
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. As currently written, the code does not permit that, nor does the Charter. The council must approve the acceptance of all donations.
I would request that you look into that and maybe raise that up to a more reasonable amount.
I'd be happy to review that and make some proposals to this committee.
All right. There's a motion from Bakhtiari. Is there a second? Seconded by Winston. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open. Vote is closed.
Six yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. This item is approved. Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Sorry. Twenty-three dash 01063, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the chief financial officer on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to pay all outstanding invoices to Precision 2000, Inc., for FC 1190431, State Route 260 Glenwood Avenue, US 23, SR State Route 42, Moreland Avenue Intersection Improvement Project Number Listed, in an amount not to exceed $138,852.57. All invoices to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization Account Number Listed herein and for other purposes. Mr. Abbasid.
Ibrahim Abbasid, interim Deputy Commissioner for Capitol Projects, Atlanta DOT. This legislation is to pay an outstanding invoice for the Glen-Morland Intersection Improvement Project. That's due to unforeseen infrastructure improvements such as drainage structures, curbing, and asphalt. The work is already completed, it's just paying this invoice.
All right. There's a motion from Shook to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bakhtiari. Any discussion? Mr. Hillis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was looking at the staff comments, and it looks like this project received multiple extensions that totaled 21 months, and at least in this, these comments, it appeared to do with utility relocations. When this contract was sent out to bid, did it have a UAS in the contract, or what were the issues? And how are we looking to not run into these again?
Yeah. Basically, that's correct. There is a lot of challenges that happen in this, in this project, including utility relocation. The contractor also requested a number of claims regarding that. We looked at that, and we denied these claims based on a contract requirement. But to answer your question, we always do our best to make sure that we follow what's in the contract and what's required by, in this case, the federal, there is a federal fund in this project, so we go by their requirements too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the vote, please.
Vote is open.
You said the project is complete, right?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Vote is closed.
Six yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. This item is approved. All right. Colleagues, I'm going to, without objection, I'm going to take all the carryforward items together. The first one, though, is 23-01072, an ordinance by Councilmembers Matt Westmoreland and Keisha Shawn Waits. And there is a substitute for this. Thank you. I'll read in the new caption, and then Councilmember Bakhtiari has made the motion to bring it forward. It's an ordinance by Councilmember Keisha Shawn Waits, as substituted by Finance Executive Committee, authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed $18,500.0 from the Post Three At-Large Carry Forward Account to support various organizations assisting with youth violence prevention and for other purposes. I'll second the motion and bring that forward. Let's go ahead and open that vote, please.
Vote is open.
And the substitute changes the amount from $12,000 to $18,500.
Vote is closed. The substitute is before you.
Yep. Six yeas, zero nays. That motion carries. Ms. Kempson Wright, so I can still take the others with it, even though this one is going to be adopted on substitute? Okay. All right. Let's keep going. I'll, I'll call up the other ones. Item number seven, 23-01076, an ordinance by Councilmember Amir Faroki, authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed $2,000.0 to the Inman Park Neighborhood Association and for other purposes. and for other purposes. Item number eight, 23-01077, an ordinance by council member Amir Faroki, authorizing the transfer of $20,000.0 from this council District Two Carryforward Account to the council District Two Distribution Account to continue serving the Atlanta community for the public good and for other purposes. Number nine is 23-01078, an ordinance by council member Amir Faroki. Nope, that's not right, sorry. Let me jump to 11. 23-01083, an ordinance by council members Antonio Lewis and Matt Westmoreland, authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed $6,000.0 from the District 12 and post two at-large carryforward accounts to Blueprint 58 and for other purposes. And item number 18, which is 23-01093, an ordinance by council member Alex Wan, authorizing the transfer of $5,000.0 from the council District Six Carryforward Account to the council District Six Distribution Account to continue serving the Atlanta community for the public good and for other purposes. I'll make a motion to approve all of those items. It's seconded by Shook.
And council member, actually, if you can make an emotion to approve item number five by itself, we were informed by a parliamentarian to take it separately.
Very good, okay, so let's take that one first. 23-01072, I'll move to approve on substitute, seconded by Shook. So, let's open the vote on that one item.
The vote is closed.
Six yeas, zero nays, the motion carries. That item is approved. So, that means items 1076, 1077, 1083, and 1093 will take it a block, and I'll make the motion to approve those items as is. Seconded by Hillis. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is closed.
Six yeas, zero nays, the motion carries. Those items are approved. Moving along, 23-01074, an ordinance by council members Westmoreland, Bakhtiari, Winston, Collier Overstreet, and Dozier, authorizing the city of Atlanta to donate a total amount not to exceed blank dollars and zero cents to Park Pride to support green space improvements and upgrades in communities across Atlanta and for other purposes. The author has requested that we hold this for one cycle, so I'll make the motion to hold. Seconded by Hillis. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Six yeas, zero nays, the motion carries. This item will be held. All right, without objection, colleagues, I'm going to take item nine, 16, and 19 together. They're all related, it'd have to do with kind of renaming funds per the audit findings, I believe. Oh, no, 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 this is reimbursing funds to the general fund from the moving Atlanta forward referendum. So, 23-01078, an ordinance by council member Amir Faroki to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget in the amount of $2,950,000.0 to reimburse the uncommitted fund balance for funds initially established for the one-time capital cost necessary to build out the Center for Diversion and Services within the Atlanta City Detention Center, which will now be funded with bond proceeds, general obligation public improvement bond series 2022A, and for other purposes. Item 16 is 23-01091, an ordinance by council member Alex Wan, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget in the amount of $6,000.0 to reimburse the uncommitted fund balance for funds utilized to support the emergency demolition and reconstruction of Cheshire Bridge Road due to the natural gas fire, which will now be funded with TSPLOS proceeds and for other purposes. And number 19, which is 23-01095, an ordinance by council member Dustin Hillis, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget by transferring appropriations advanced from the uncommitted fund balance to nondepartmental in amount of $7.5 million, even for the acquisition of 75 acres of land from the Conservation Fund to increase parks, green space, recreation, and watershed land in the city to be reallocated to various department operating budgets and for other purposes. Colleagues, do you have any questions for Dr. Wilson and the Finance Department for this? If not, there's a motion to approve from Shook. Is there a second from Hillis? There's no further discussion, let's go ahead and open the vote on those three items, please.
Vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed.
Six yeas, zero nays, the motion carries. Those three items are approved. Thank you. Item number 10, 23-0182, an ordinance by council members Lewis, Winston, Faroki, Amos, Dozier, Bakhtiari, Wan, Shook, Waits, Bond, and Boone, to ratify services rendered in connection with agreement number listed, ARPA Gun Violence Prevention Services with Cure Violence Global in accordance with section number listed, Article 10, procurement and real estate code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, and to authorize the mayor or his designee to enter into amendment number one to the agreement to extend the term for one year, beginning retroactively on December 20, 2022, and ending on December 19, 2023, on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Equity, Diversion, and Inclusion and for other purposes. Mr. Pace.
Good afternoon, Chairman Wan, members of the Finance Exec Committee, Theo Pace, Deputy Chief of Staff, Office of the Mayor. The purpose of this legislation is to extend the agreement with Cure Violence Global for the days that you just mentioned, for the purpose of allowing this organization to complete its work. There's no additional funding being added to this agreement, but it would allow them to complete their outreach training with workers, violence interrupters, and other program staff.
All right, questions from Mr. Pace? Motion from Shook to approve, seconded by Hillis. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Six yeas, zero nays, the motion carries. That item is approved. All right, now, item number 12, 23-0187, there is a substitute for this that just got handed. Motion from Bakhtiari, seconded by Shook. Let me read the caption because it, it does change the caption, I believe. It's an ordinance by council members Collier Overstreet, Bakhtiari, Hillis, Boone, Lewis, Bond, and Westmoreland, as substituted by Finance Executive Committee, authorizing the chief financial officer to transfer funds in an amount not to exceed $500,000.0 from the general fund, nondepartmental, to trust fund, to be used to fund the Atlanta Jazz Festival, to be paid to and from accounts listed below and for other purposes. So, let's open the vote to bring that forward.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, substitute is before you.
All right, so we have that before us. Before we go on, since we have a number of Jazz Festival papers, I'm going to read all of them in so that we can talk about them and block, but that we will vote on them separately since this one's on substitute. The first one is item number 14, 23-0189, an ordinance by council member Andrea L. Boone, waiving the competitive sources election requirements contained in Article 10, procurement and real estate code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, and authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into agreements with performers, artists, media outlets, and sponsors for the 2023 Atlanta Jazz Festival in Atlanta, and allowing the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs to charge admission fees for select events at the festival, and directing that all Jazz Festival revenues and expenses be deposited and expended from the accounts listed below and for other purposes. Items 21, 20, 23-R 3152, it's a resolution by council member Marcy Collier Overstreet, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into contract renewal option number one with Forest Day Services LLC, contract number listed, stage services on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs in an amount not to exceed $19,825.0, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from funding numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item 21, which is 23-R 3153, resolution by council member Marcy Collier Overstreet, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into contract renewal option number one with Atlanta Productions, doing business as Music Matters, contract number listed, Sound Audio Services on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs in an amount not to exceed $26,165.40, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from funding numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number two, I'll go ahead and read it in, and we're going to hold this one, but I will take these actions appropriately, but 23-R 3154, resolution by council member Marcy Collier Overstreet, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into contract renewal option number two with Premier Events LLC, contract number listed, Festival Management Services on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs in an amount not to exceed $41,500.0, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from funding numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item 23, which is 23-R 3155, resolution by council member Marcy Collier Overstreet, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into contract renewal option number two with Witten Management, Inc., contract number listed, Waste Management Services on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs in an amount not to exceed $40,500.0, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from funding numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Number 24, we've got five more, y'all. 23-3156, a resolution by council member Marcy Collier Overstreet, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into contract renewal option number two with D&amp;B Rentals, Inc., doing business as Atlanta Tent Rental, contract number listed, rentals on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs in an amount not to exceed $30,853.0, all contracted work to be charged to and paid for funding numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Jump to number 27, which is 23-R 3162, resolution by council member Andrea L. Boone, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into contract renewal option number one with Atlanta Productions, doing business as Music Matters, contract number listed, lighting services on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs in an amount not to exceed $28,286.0, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from funding numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item 28, a resolution, 23-R 3162, resolution by council member Andrea L. Boone, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into contract renewal option number two with Phoenix Concessions LLC, contract number listed, vendor management services on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs. All contract revenues shall be deposited into accounts listed herein and for other purposes. Number 29 is 23-R 3163, resolution by council member Andrea L. Boone, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into contract renewal option number two with Sunbelt Rentals, Inc., contract number listed, electrical services on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs in an amount not to exceed $45,947.0, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from funding numbers listed herein and for other purposes. And item 47, there will be a substitute for this. I'll go ahead and read this in, though. 23-R 3214, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs to administer the municipal support for the arts program as required by Section 110-38 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances through the provisions of donations to eligible tax-exempt organizations and entities in individual amounts not to exceed $75,000.0 in a total amount not to exceed $2,000.0 for fiscal year 2023 in accordance with Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta Charter, authorizing the mayor or the executive director of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs as the mayor's designee to execute donation agreements with eligible tax-exempt organizations and entities necessary for the administration of the municipal support for the arts program for fiscal year 2023 on behalf of the City of Atlanta to authorize the chief financial officer to charge to and pay the donations authorized hereby from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Actually, I don't think that last one is Jazz Festival related, but I read it. Huh? Okay, yeah, I do too, once that comes up. Okay, so, no, we'll do that separately because it's not necessarily related. All right, so, now that we have all those read in, Ms. Prothro?
Yes.
I'm going to have you speak to these.
Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon, Monica Prothro, Deputy Director for the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs. So, the legislation before you is to assist the Office of Cultural Affairs to produce and present the 46th Atlanta Jazz Festival that would take place May 26 to the 29th in Piedmont Park. And so, the first piece is the request for the $500,000 to assist with expenses. There are several renewals that you just read in, and those renewals would be covered by funding that is currently in the OCA Trust, the Atlanta Jazz Trust account. But this $500,000 would assist us to cover additional expenses. One, that will include security for the festival, post-certified and T-shirt security, and right now, those costs are coming in about $160,000. This $500,000 will also assist us to cover EMS staffing and ambulance services for the festival event, which will be three days, along with that pull-up toilets, performance fees, fencing. So, that $500,000 that we're requesting will assist us to cover those fees, those expenses I just referenced.
Okay, and then the other ones are specific contracts, or renewal options that will allow you to get, engage with the vendors, correct?
Correct, and funding for those renewals, there's funding in the Jazz Trust that covers those renewals currently.
All right, so, I'm going to start with some questions, and then if anybody else has some questions. So, overall, what is the operating budget for the 2023 Jazz Festival?
So, that budget is coming in about $1.2 million.
All right, and so, from that, where we're sourcing is $500,000 being proposed by this legislation?
Correct, and we have, yes, from the general fund. That $500,000 will be sourced by the general fund, that will be transferred into the Atlanta Jazz Festival Trust account to cover the remaining expenses. We are actively seeking sponsorship to cover those expenses, working with the sponsorship partnership director with the Mayor's Office.
Is there existing balance in the trust fund right now?
It's about $230,000.
Okay, so, if I'm correct, budget of 1.2 million, you're asking for 500 here, you've got 230 in the trust, so you're, you have to raise a half million dollars-
Correct.
-to cover everything and make yourself whole for that. Anything above that just kind of carries forward?
That is correct.
What has been kind of the track record in terms of fundraising?
It varies. For fiscal year 23, we got about $300,000 in sponsorship dollars.
That was for fiscal year 22?
Fiscal year 22, yes.
What's the high watermark in terms of fundraising dollars?
It depends on our expenses, so our fundraising benchmark is determined by our expenses that we're going to, and it varies from year to year in terms of expenses. The last two years, we've seen how current labor expenses have increased with the production needs that the festival have.
So, is there a year where we've actually raised $500,000?
I want to say maybe the last, prior to the pandemic, yes.
Okay.
We did see a decrease in funding coming right during the pandemic and right after, particularly when we went to fundraise for the '22 Jazz Festival.
And then who, what is the, what's the profile of our typical?
Funders.
Yeah.
They're corporate founders. We have Publix has been a sponsor, PNC, Coca-Cola, AARP, a lot of corporate sponsors.
Okay. What was the amount that we funded last year? Do you recall?
I believe last year was $400,000.
You're asking for an increase of $100,000 this year?
Correct, and that is, the driver is that is our security costs.
Okay, and then my final question, and I see two other council members have questions. The remaining resolutions and the contracts that are there are essentially included in the, in your 1.2 million dollar budget, right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, all right, I will hand the mic over to council member Collier Overstreet and then Bakhtiari.
Thank you for coming with all of those details.
My pleasure.
And this is one of my favorite, and it's probably why you heard my name so many times. This is one of my favorite programs or shows that we do as a city, and I dream of a day when we're not piecemealing it and where the skies are blue and the grass is green.
We dream of that day as well.
And we actually invest in our Jazz Festival. I have a few things that are important to me. The singers are one, and this Jazz Festival is one. So, I just want to know, where are we with a budgeted item for our Jazz Festival coming up this budget cycle, and we're so close? So, maybe in May, I'll see something I've never seen before.
That's our desire, to include that the Jazz Festival be a part of the fiscal year budget, starting in 2024 and years after.
Ooh.
That's our hope.
See, that's all I want, I'm dreaming. The sky is blue, the grass is green, and I may have a Jazz Festival budgeted in our FY '24 budget.
Thank you, we are dreaming with you and willing to work, and willing to work with Finance Administration to see how that we can make that work.
Thank you, that's all I want.
All right, council member Bakhtiari.
Thank you for everything. I do have a couple, we had a number of questions about this last year, and so, I'm sorry, I don't know if you were here for those questions, I don't know if you were in the audience, I know that you weren't presenting to us last time.
There might have been mislove.
Yes, and so, what's this love? And so, as council member Overstreet said, like, this is a great event. I do have some questions because one of the things we consistently asked last year was for a count to occur, and the numbers we were given were a little too exact and too similar for me to really believe that that was the actual count. Is there a way that we can add in? Because we need to really be tracking if we're going to be investing money into this, and I would love to see this type of investment for arts across the board, more actually, given that it generates so much funds.
So, you're requesting a list of expenses and revenue for a period of time?
No, we're talking about attendance. We wanted to see the attendance for the, yes, the attendance for the event. The numbers were a little- The numbers were a little, it was interesting to see that the projected number was the same exact, like, number each year, which led me to believe that it wasn't accurate. So I'm wondering if we can perhaps do a count this year, an accurate count?
So we're working with that. We rely on numbers, projections from APD after the festival is over in terms of what our attendance is. We will look to see how we can work with them to make sure that the numbers are accurate as possible.
And to be, and you said that you are opening this up to corporate sponsorship as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, because I believe that was one of our concerns last year, was a lack of outside sponsorship and it just coming from the city. And I also saw that somewhere it mentioned that this event is estimated to raise $15 million for the city?
That's the projection, yes. In terms of hotel, the economy, and people coming to the city during the festival, that is the estimated benefit to the city.
Do we have anything to back up that estimate? Any sources we could draw from, any evidence of?
We will provide documentation.
That would be super helpful, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You spoke of some opportunities on sponsorship dollars to be able to generate some revenue. Are there other generating, or revenue generating mechanisms that we have? For instance, charging food vendors to be at the festival?
Yes, so there are food vendors, there are merchandise vendors, there are vendors that, yes, food and merchandise vendors, and then we have a merchandise tent as well for the Jazz Festival merchandise.
Okay. And then I know a number of council members, including myself, are having our own satellite concerts in our district. Are there also potential revenue opportunities in, at those satellite concerts as well?
We're open to the conversation. We have been inspired that in previous years, but we're open to the conversation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Real quick, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilmember Winston, are you like indicating something like impact fees for the district that they're being held in?
I'm just hoping that, you know, I could get some food vendors, I might be able to have some local sponsors, you know, within the district that might want to participate to make it a little bit bigger than what it is.
So food vendors is part of our request for the permit for your event. So yes, food vendors will be on-site during that, on that day.
Okay. I think if I don't, if I'm not mistaken, there was only two food vendors that were allowed per the permit that we are doing for our district concerts.
That's correct.
So there could be an opportunity to get more.
We're open to the conversation. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Overstreet.
Yeah, I was just going to say that anytime I had a standalone satellite Jazz Festival in the district, I've had food trucks and vendors and things of that nature through permitting.
Yes, and there are some, that may be a community organization you like that you want to engage in, to be present on-site, to engage with your constituents on that day as well. So that's also permitted.
Any other questions? So here is my concern, and I expressed this last year, and, you know, I would echo this to Ms. Love if she were here. I agree. I think this is a very important and marquee event for the city to do, and I'm in no ways suggesting, and plus it's in District 6, so I'm in no way even hinting or suggesting that we shouldn't do this. Where I get concerned is that such a marquee event that's done successfully in other cities as well, I feel like should be self-sustaining. And I don't know exactly why we have not been able to reach that point, and it feels like we're actually moving in the other direction where the city is, from its general fund, continuing to actually contribute and support the event a little bit more. And that's also why I'm a little nervous about having it included in a budget line item. By having it separate, actually, I think pushes everyone in the same direction of trying to make it as self-sustaining as possible versus this notion of, oh, I'll always be able to dip into the General Fund to operate it. The other piece, though, is that, you know, I don't know if, what the model that other cities and other similar festivals have done in terms of, would it make sense for us to spin this off and let a separate or adjacent or related nonprofit run this? I know there is a nonprofit associated with, as far as the fundraising arm and managing arm, but, you know, a half a million dollars, in my opinion, actually, no, if you took aggregate, a million dollars to be able to do this annually since we've been doing it so long, that has the reputation and the attendance and the appeal that it does, the fact that it's, you know, where it's located should lend itself to being on, in that direction versus the other direction that we're heading.
So one major difference in our festival and other festivals that you reference is that it is free for admission. A lot of the festivals, their revenue, the majority of their revenue is for admission to those festivals.
Sure. And I, again, I appreciate that, and it is a music festival, but, you know, we've, our city's also been able to produce, not the city itself, but we've been able to produce other free events. If you think back to Screen on the Green at Piedmont Park, it was a series of events that was free. Now, it was underwritten heavily, but that's, I feel like, the model we should be following here, is that we should have enough community, philanthropic, even artistic community support that would converge on this if we sort of, you know, if, I don't, again, if we, I think we needed a different strategy on this.
We agree with that. We're working with the partnership director in looking at our ask and how it compares to the overall ask that the City of Atlanta makes to the corporate community and the foundation community for support of all the City of Atlanta assets.
Yeah. And I also, you know, I understand the challenge of that. The administration's also going out and asking for support for all the other initiatives as well. But all that said, I don't know, I just don't, maybe because I'm not privy to all the conversations, I just don't feel like there is a real articulated strategy in terms of moving that, and it's every year we're coming back, asking the General Fund to help support this.
We share your sentiment. We want the festival to be self-sustaining as well, but those, we do have those challenges, and we're open to different funding models and looking at different models to assist in that effort.
All right. I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Sook, and then I'll come back.
I'm going to vote for this, but kind of along the same lines as I share the chair's sort of general strategic thinking here, because like him, I'm from around here, and it is kind of this, I'm sure you guys don't like to go through this, you'll ad hoc.
That is very true.
Exercise, and I know that. But, you know, we have an entertainment industry that's the envy of the country. Specifically, we have a recording and music industry that's locally a multi-billion-dollar cash cow. What's the, what prevents you from going to them? And why wouldn't they want to be much, much bigger, more prominent partners?
Nothing's preventing us. Our, we are extending our reach to that arena, and we're, in terms of our fundraising efforts, and so you're right, we will reach, include those organizations and entities. It's part of our, in our fundraising efforts.
But why is it apparently so difficult to get there from here? I mean, a couple of these labels can overturn a couple sofa cushions and come up with a lot of money.
That's true. We're exploring that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, another model that someone just sent to me is, I mean, maybe we need to just engage a producer to do it, a turnkey producer, and that, you know, we're paying a fee for, but then let that expertise reside where it should in terms of production. I mean, it's a big lift, I know that, and y'all are a small but mighty team.
Turnkey production also is a increase in production expenses.
Yeah.
There we, yeah.
Fair enough. All right, with that, I mean, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, and this first one's going to be on substitute, because this, the motion's going to be different for the rest of these, but, all right.
Chair Juan, I'm sorry, we have received an amendment from the Department of Finance to the caption.
Okay.
The new caption proposes authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget and trust fund budget by transferring an amount not to exceed $500,000.0 from the General Fund, non-departmental, to be used to fund the Atlanta Jazz Festival.
Okay. So it's basically just form, it's form versus content. All right. Just, I'll make the motion to amend, seconded by Sook. Let's go ahead and open that vote, please.
Vote is open.
Six J zero Nays, the paper is, the substitute is amended. I'll now make a motion to approve on substitute as amended, seconded by, actually, we was, Collier Overstreet originally. Let's, let's go ahead and open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Six J zero Nays, the motion carries this item is approved on substitute as amended. All right, so let's go ahead and take the other agreements. Well, first of all, let's take the ones we need to file. So that's 23-R-3154. It's item number 22. This is with Premier Events. And then also number 28, 23-R-3162. This is the one with Phoenix Concessions. I believe we're filing these because the underlying contracts have expired. Is that correct? So we can't use these forms to do it. All right, I'll make the motion to file those, seconded by Bakhtiari. Let's open that vote on those two items, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Six J zero Nays, the motion carries those two items are filed. All right, and then I'll take the other resolutions. Item 20, 3152 with Force Day Services, 3153 with Atlanta Productions doing business as music matters. Item 23, which is 3155 with Witton Management. Item 24, which is 3156 with D&amp;B Rentals. Item 27, which is 3161 with Atlanta Productions doing business as music matters again. Item 29, which is 3163 with Sunbelt Rentals. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve those items as is. Is there a second? From Collier Overstreet, let's open the vote on those items, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Six J zero Nays, that motion carries that, those items are approved. And I believe the last one will be item number 14, which is 23-O-1089. And this is essentially the authorization to enter in agreements with the performers as well as the potential ticketed events. All right, I'll make a motion to approve that one. Is there a second? Seconded by Collier Overstreet, let's open the vote on those, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Six J zero Nays, the motion carries that item is approved. All right, I understand Ms. Bakhtiari has time constraint and has two papers we need to go and pull up. If you will hold on, let's take care of those, and then I'll pull you back up for the last one.
Thank you for your support by the Jazz Festival. We thank you for your feedback and your recommendations.
Thank you. Councilmember Bakhtiari, which ones are they?
Ms. Kimson, right, would you?
Oh, 25?
Direct us to the ones, yeah, 25 and 26.
Okay. All right, so item number 25 is 23-R-3158, a resolution by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari denouncing the government of the Islamic Republic of Iran for its continued violence against the Iranian people, denouncing any and all entities which have not taken action against or continue to support this oppressive regime, and calling for the instatement of a democratically elected government for the Iranian people and for other purposes. Ms. Bakhtiari.
Thank you. First, thank you to my colleagues for making the time, for allowing me to go ahead. This is a resolution essentially continuing to denounce what is happening in Iran. There's organizations here that people are funding that are connected to this regime. Please, I push for you to actually ask Iranian people rather than just blindly giving money to organizations that are created in this country to support dictatorships. So I have constituents in my, in my district that are affected by this. My family is affected by this. So I just wanted to speak to that, to draw more attention, and I move to approve.
All right, there's a motion from Ms. Bakhtiari. Is there a second? Seconded by Sook. Let's open the vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Six J zero Nays, the motion carries that item is approved. All right, 23-R-3160, resolution by councilmembers Bakhtiari, Winston, Faroki, Amos, Dozier, Juan, Hillis, Boone, Collier Overstreet, Lewis, and Wes Morland, requesting that the City of Atlanta Define Benefit Pension Plan Investment Board, the Investment Board divest city employee pension funds from the private prisons, from private prisons by 2030, and requesting that no further investments be made into such companies starting in FY 2024 and for other purposes. Ms. Bakhtiari.
First, I want to thank Finance for all the help with this paper. Essentially, this is to move away from, work from the, to get the city to move away from working with any agency that still enlists prison labor to make its products. Prison labor is legal slavery. It is completely, it is morally horrendous. It is wrong. It's not something our system should be doing. And so I am committed to making every step to get us away from that in every way possible, given that we know that certain minorities are more profiled often than others due to racist ideology. So this is an attempt to get us away from that and continue living the promise of being a civil rights city and a human rights city. So I move to approve.
Seconded by Hillis. Any comments or questions? Ms. Collier Overstreet.
I think we need to at least be clear that, and state that we don't have any. We don't do that.
So we had our pension advisors look into our current allocation. We don't have any direct exposure to any, any companies that are directly related in prison labor. We do have some indirect exposure that is very, very minimal. We will continue to work with those specific funds to find comparable funds that lessen that exposure. So it's, it's already something that we have kind of been aligning towards, but this makes it clear that this is the direction the city will go forward.
Yes, to make the statement that we will not be doing this again, or we, minimal changes, but we don't, but we will not, we are committed to never doing this in the future.
All right, other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the vote, please.
Vote is open.
Six J zero Nays, the motion carries that item is approved. So Ms. Prothro, if I can have you come back up, let's pick up that last one so that we can send you on your way. This is item 23-R-3214. And colleagues, there is a substitute for this one that cleans up the account number, so I'll make a motion to bring that substitute forward, seconded by Hillis. Let's open that vote, please, to bring forward the substitute.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. The substitute is before you.
All right. Ms. Prothro, if you'll tell us what this paper does, and we'll go from there.
Yes, so this paper grants the civility to support our nonprofit arts and culture sector in a program called, through a program called Municipal Support for the Arts. And so arts organizations submit a grant application to apply for these funds, and they either request support for general operating support or project support.
All right. Questions for the department, the administration on this? Yes, Councilmember Bakhtiari.
So a quick question. Obviously, always want to see investments in our arts, and for those who don't know, for every dollar we invest in the arts, we get at least a $4 return, so that's extraordinary. Just very quickly, would like to know how we determine who is eligible for this?
So there is a specific, well, the eligibility requirement is that the organization must be headquartered in the city limits of Atlanta, and their programs that they're presenting must take place in the city limits of Atlanta. They must be a 501(c)(3) organization headquartered and incorporated in the state of Georgia.
Okay. Is there anything that we, well, let me say this, I would love to be a resource to assist other individuals in my district and around the area. My partner is a professional dancer, and I mean for Glow ATL nonprofit. So if there, or used to be, if there's anything I can do to be a resource for this, to help artists who obviously do not make a lot of money, and most are barely making, scraping by in our city, if there's anything I can do to make this more accessible to more individuals, please consider me a resource.
Will do. Thank you so much.
In terms of the implementation of this program, does this paper essentially give you all the authority to do the selection and awards without coming back and report to council of who the awardees are?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that how we've done it in the past?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
We're happy to share with you, the council, the guarantees that within your council districts. We'd be happy to provide that information.
Yeah, I would, I think that would be good just for us to know, considering the dollar amount, and I think it would make for a nice.
Yeah.
Announcement in terms of the, you know, our investment in support of the arts community here in Atlanta. All right, is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve on substitute, seconded by Sook. Let's open the vote, please. Let's open the vote, please.
The vote is closed, this item is favorable on substitute.
Six J zero nays, the motion carries this item is approved on.
Thank you for your support.
All right, so let's go back. I believe we ended originally on item number 12, which was the Jazz Festival, and that's what kind of waterfall to all that other. So I think we're on number 13. So 23 dash O 1088, this is an ordinance by Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet, amending 22 dash O 1635, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on August 15, 2022, and approved by the mayor on August 23, 2022, which established the mayor's Office of International and Immigrant Affairs for the purpose of correcting accounting and personnel information in Section 6 and for other purposes. We have an amendment for this that adds position numbers, adds missing position numbers being transferred. I'll make the motion to amend, seconded by Shook. Let's open the vote to amend, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries this item is amended. Mr. Pace.
Afternoon again, Mr. Chair, Theo Pace, Office of the Mayor. This legislation cleans up a paper adopted last August by the City Council that merged the Office of Immigrant Affairs with International Affairs. It includes the needed position codes to allow the Department of Finance and Human Resources to basically move those positions from immigrant affairs to the appropriate department orgs in the Office of International Affairs.
All right, there's a motion from Shook to approve is amended. I'll second that. Just want to confirm that there is no money, additional funding that is required or affected by this. All right, any other questions? There's a motion, it's been moved improperly, seconded, let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries this item is approved as amended. All right, that next, takes us to items 15, and without objection, colleagues, I'm going to take 15 and 17 together as they are related. 23 dash O 1090, ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the city's chart of accounts by creating a new special revenue fund for recording American Rescue Plan relief funds received from the federal government. H R 1319, 117th Congress, 21 to 22, to rescue the economy. All ARPA budgets posted revenue and posted expenses for fiscal year '23 shall be moved from Fund 2508 into this newly created Fund 2509 and for other purposes. And then 23 dash O 1092, ordinance by Councilmember Alex Juan, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the city's chart of accounts for the purpose of renaming the special revenue fund 2508 that was established for the CARES Act, funding allocated to the City of Atlanta for the purposes, purpose of recording coronavirus relief funds received from the United States Department of Treasury from CARES Act 2020 to COVID-19 response grants and for other purposes. I had Mr. Delortus speaking, but obviously that's not you, so please come and tell us about these two, introduce yourself and tell us about these two papers.
Yes, good afternoon, Chairman Juan, and members of the Finance Committee, Chukwem Naya Johnson, Controller for the City of Atlanta. So the first ordinance, 23 O 1090, is for us to create a new fund for the ARPA grant, and this is for us to implement the recommendations by Malden and Jenkins during the FY '22 audit.
Any question? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sorry. So we're hoping to create the new fund number as to 509. And what we'll do also is move the FY '23 budget that is currently sitting in Fund 2508 for ARPA to the new fund, as well as all of the posted revenue and expenses since July 1st for FY '23, and going forward use that fund for ARPA.
Any questions from Ms. Johnson? Motion from Shook to approve on both items, seconded by Overstreet. Let's open the vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries item, both items are approved. Okay, that actually takes us now down to item number 30, which is 23 dash R 3162. There is a substitute for this. I'll read in the caption and make the motion to bring it forward. It's a resolution by Councilmember Alex Juan, a substitute by Finance Executive Committee, authorizing the chief financial officer to refund customers for overpayments to water and tour accounts in an amount of $43, $42,038. All funds to be charged to and paid from Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed and for other purposes. Motion to bring it forward, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, the substitute is before you.
All right, any discussion or questions on this? I'll make the motion to approve on substitute, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries this item is approved on substitute. Item number 31, 23 dash R 3167, and there, I guess we can do it as. Actually, I'll read in the caption. A resolution by Councilmember Mary Norwood, authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed $50,000.0 to Chastain Horse Park Limited, a Georgia nonprofit corporation, to support its mission of empowering riders of all abilities through life-changing relationship with, relationships with horses, authorizing the chief financial officer to charge to and pay the donation authorized hereby from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. There's an amendment to change the reference of donation to transfer throughout the document. I'll make the motion to amend, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries the amended papers before us. And colleagues, this is actually the first of the transfers from the discretionary vertical fund, so I think the administration is now ready. If there are others that you're contemplating, this would be the kind of proper form to follow going forward. Is there any discussion on this particular paper? All right, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve on, as amended, seconded by Shook. Let's open the vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries the amended paper is approved. All right, 23 dash R 3168, resolution by Councilmembers Bond, Winston, Amos, Hillis, Boone, Collier Overstreet, and Lewis, and Westmoreland, requesting the mayor of the City of Atlanta or his designate to identify funds in the amount of $5,000.0 to support the Black Music and Entertainment Walk of Fame Development and for other purposes. Questions or comments on this one? Mr. Shook.
Yeah, I'm wondering why this isn't a carryforward paper. That's what it looks like to me. That's what it should be, I'll just say it. Instead of a general fund ask.
I would say that's, that would be my position as well. I would be supportive of this in its current form. I just, you know, given the dollar amount, it doesn't make sense to do this because it ultimately precipitate, could precipitate a number of small donations like this.
Motion to hold.
All right, there's a motion from Collier Overstreet to hold, seconded by Hillis. There's no further discussion, let's open the vote on the motion to hold.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries this paper will be held. Okay, item number 33 is 23 dash R 3200, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee to correct Resolution Number 22 dash R 4256, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on September 19, 2022, and approved per City Charter, Section 2 dash 403, on September 28, 2022, by deleting the incorrect funding source and replacing it with the correct funding source, all work to be charged to and paid from accounts listed and for other purposes. Commissioner Santil.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Remy Santil, Commissioner of Department of Enterprise Asset Management. This legislation is, as stated, and is simply just moving the funds.
Any questions or comments? Motion from Shook to approve, is there a second? Seconded from Collier Overstreet, let's open the vote, please.
Vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries that item is approved. 23 dash R 3201, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an agreement for contract number listed, citywide pest control services with Orkin Inc. on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management, the Atlanta Fire and Rescue Department, Department of Aviation, Department of Corrections, Department of Parks and Recreation, and the Department of Watership Management, for a term of three years with two one-year renewal options in an amount not to exceed $291,289.0 annually. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Motion from Shook to approve is there a second? Seconded by Hillis. I do have a question for, for you on this one. So I, I'm glad to see the number of departments on this. I'm surprised that the dollar amount is where it's at, and I'm just hoping that we're not going to see a series of amendments later over the course of the year, next year, and through the renewal options where this jumps and keeps jumping.
Well.
Was there a effort to consolidate use and need before?
Yes, but also that would depend on frequency and the increase of rodents. So if we have any instances of bugs or rodents that increases, a frequency would increase, which would mean a cost would increase. So right now, we're at a sustainable frequency, but that doesn't mean that it will, it will not change.
And then is this dollar, first year dollar amount at least in line with what these collective aggregated departments expended at least?
The previous, right.
It's consistent?
Yes, and actually some, actually increased some of their frequencies as well. And we got a good, pretty good rate as well on this particular.
I don't know, Chief Procurement Officer, did you want to make, add a comment to this while you're here?
Jyade Pujumda, Chief Procurement Officer, City of Atlanta. We are actually looking at the scope of work, and perhaps this could be an opportunity for us to consolidate everything and then go out again with a bid so that we can capture the entire scope rather than piecemealing and adding it.
Yeah, I would just encourage us to do that on the front end versus the back end because it just, yeah, anyway. All right, thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve. Let's go ahead and open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries that item is approved. 23 dash R 3202, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute Amendment Number Four, the sole source agreement number listed, IBM Maximo Asset Management Annual Software Subscription and Support Services with International Business Machines Corporation, to add additional funding in an amount not to exceed $140,168.0 on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management and for other purposes. Commissioner.
Yes, so again, Remy Santil, Commissioner of DEEM. This, the purpose of this legislation is to allow an, a module extension to our Maximo program that will allow our real estate team to upload real property into the system and give us comprehensive view of our assets across the enterprise and allow the team to automate the entire lease, lease management process and manage contracts for critical leases to indicate so we can get notifications on lease dates, rental payments, and such.
Questions for the Commissioner? Motion from Shook to approve, is there a second? Seconded by Hillis, let's open the vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries this item is approved. All right, next item is 23 dash R 3203, resolution by Finance Executive Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an agreement for RFP number listed, design build for 40,000 square foot warehouse with 930 Marriott Atlanta LLC for the design build of a 40,000 square foot warehouse space on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management for a term of two years with one one-year renewal option in an amount not to exceed $3,600,000.0. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Colleagues, first action we need to do is to amend to attach the I Pro report. I'll make that motion to amend, seconded by Hillis. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries the paper is amended. All right, Commissioner, if you'll tell me about this.
This paper is actually being held in a substitute under the advisement of law for further research.
Okay, so I'll move to hold this as amended, seconded by Winston. Let's open that vote, please. Thanks.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries this paper will be held. Next item, 23 dash R 3204, there is a substitute, but the caption is, is the same. It's a resolution by Finance Executive Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designate to exercise the first renewal option for cooperative purchasing agreement number listed, citywide integrated security and video surveillance services with Covergent Technology LLC, contract number listed, G C and E Systems Group Inc., contract number listed, and Net Planner Systems Inc., contract number listed, effective April 21, 2023 through April 20, 2024, expressly contingent upon the state of Georgia's renewal of the underlying state of Georgia's contracts number listed for each of the contractors on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management, Atlanta Department of Transportation, Atlanta Police Department, Atlanta Fire and Rescue Department, Municipal Court of Atlanta, Department of Parks and Recreation, Department of Public Works, Department of City Planning, and the Department of Watership and Management in an amount not to exceed $9,151,490.51. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and Accounts Number listed herein and for other purposes. I'll make a motion and bring forward the substitute, which corrects the funding stream for APD and reduces the amount, adds additional CARES account, adds corrections as a user, and then add some missing verbiage. So the dollar amount actually is increasing by $500,000, it looks like. So I'll make, it actually is increasing the dollar amount. All right, so it's been moved by Shook. I'll second the motion to bring forward the substitute. Let's go ahead and open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries this item, substitute is before us. Commissioner.
Yes, so this renewal will allow departments to order additional CCTV equipment as needed. CCTV equipment is needed for strategic locations within the departments, which will help prevent vandalism, break-ins, and other serious crimes that we're trying to surveil throughout the city.
Hey, the caption says, subject to the renewal by the state of Georgia. Is it, is that happening before April 21st? I've never seen that before.
Yeah, I know this is a co-op with the state of Georgia. That particular aspect of it, I'm not fully aware of.
Maybe not, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, it's just kind of odd to see that. But, all right, is there any other questions or comments? Motion from Shook to approve on substitute, I'll second that. Let's open the vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five V A zero nays, the motion carries this item is approved on substitute. Actually, I'm going to go back to that. So what happens if they don't renew?
If, what, the state?
Yeah.
But I'm not sure. We would have to put it back out, put it back out for bits for ourselves.
Look for what they do, see if the, go ahead, do you want to address that?
Those are the, Jyade Pujumda, Chief Procurement Officer. Those are the challenges we have with co-op. We have to understand what the co-op has or is there, and we have to take proactive steps. So from our end, we have started planning that if it doesn't get renewed, then what is the plan of action? And that is part of our 90-day plan going forward.
Um, for law, I mean, and I don't know why I'm zeroing on this much. So, so let's say they renew two of the three. Can this legislation still move forward and we negotiate a contract with the two that do get renewed, and then the third drops off, and then they have to come forward with a new one, a substitute for that third contractor? Is that how that would work?
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. I do apologize. Could you please begin the question again and restate it? Thank you.
The caption says this is contingent on the state of Georgia who are co-op doing the co-op purchasing agreement with. They renew their contracts with all three. So I'm looking at the downside. What happens if they don't renew all of them? Can this paper still carry, move forward with the two that they do, and then drop the third one that doesn't get renewed, and then procurement and DEEM comes back with a separate paper? Or do we have to, does this bomb the whole? If one gets rejected, all three get rejected?
If you might, if I could have about five minutes to review the full paper other than the caption. the caption, I can provide that answer.
Yeah, it's not, it's not critical, but look, we just keep moving forward, but yeah, it was more curiosity than anything else.
It's, it's actually the underlying contract, the anchor, underlying contract.
Oh, so it is the whole?
So, it's the, if the anchor goes away, all the others could be in jeopardy.
Oh, wow. Okay, thank you for that clarification then. All right.
And I'll defer to legal law department to answer that question in its entirety.
Again, I'm still, I'm going to answer the question, but I happen to inform our team that the state has informed the city that it will be moving forward with, with the contracts, so.
Okay, so, that's a non-issue. Okay, thank you. All right, thirty-two, item number thirty-eight, twenty-three dash R, thirty-two oh five, and we do have a substitute for this that corrects the task order number and corrects the contract verbiage. So, I'm going to read in that caption. So, it's a substitute resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to issue Task Order Number Listed for Job Order Contracting Consulting Services with the Gordian Group, Inc., Construction Management Services for Fire Station 22 Construction on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management in an amount not to exceed All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. I'll move to bring the substitute forward. Can I get a second from Shook? Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is closed.
Five VAs, zero NAs, the motion carries. Substitute is before us. All right, next, wait, Commissioner, sorry, tell us about this paper.
Sure, this legislation is just to authorize the construction management services for the construction Fire Station 22.
Any questions? I'll make a motion to approve on substitute, seconded by Hillis. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five VAs, zero NAs, the motion carries. Item is approved on substitute. Twenty-three dash R, thirty-two oh six, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to issue Task Order Number Three for contract number listed, the citywide architectural planning, design, engineering, and construction phase services with the Fitzgerald Collaborative Group LLC for design services of Fire Station 26 on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management in an amount not to exceed All contracted work will be charged to and paid from accounts listed and for other purposes. Commissioner.
Yes, this legislation is as stated. This is just for our design services for Fire Station 26.
Any questions or comments? Motion from Shook to approve, seconded by Hillis. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five VAs, zero NAs, the motion carries. That item is approved. Next item, twenty-three dash R, thirty-two oh seven, there is a substitute for this that does not change the caption, but it's a resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the temporary re-engagement of City of Atlanta retiree John Lovell as a real estate consultant for the Department of Enterprise Asset Management and to authorize the mayor or his designee to execute a professional services agreement retroactively effective January 1, 2023, for a period not to exceed 520 days in an amount not to exceed $50,000.0 pursuant to Section 3 dash 505A of the Charter of the City of Atlanta and for other purposes. I'll make a motion and bring forward the substitute which adds language to reference previous legislation that authorized original agreement. I'll second that motion by Shook. Let's open the vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. The substitute is before you.
Mr. Robinson, did you need to speak to this?
No, I did not need to speak to this paper. I did have the answer to the question about item number 37. If, for whatever reason, the state were to decide to not go forward with all of the contracts, the contract that the state did not go forward with, we would not be able to move forward with the renewal, but the others could move forward.
Thank you for researching that. All right, regarding this paper, Commissioner, did you have any comments on this?
No, just simply to reengage with Mr. Lovell.
All right, so, did I, we have a motion, motion from Shook to approve on substitute, seconded by Overstreet. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is closed.
Five VAs, zero NAs, the motion carries. That item is approved on substitute. All right, twenty-three dash R, thirty-two oh eight, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute a special procurement agreement number listed, recyclables processing services with Pratt Recycling, Inc., on behalf of the Department of Public Works pursuant to Section 2 dash 1191.1 of the City of Atlanta Code of Warnesses for a term of three years with two one-year renewal options to be exercised at the sole discretion of the city in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000.0. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Administration asked us to hold this, so that's the motion to hold, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open.
Shook wants to override the administration. Five VAs, zero NAs, the motion carries. This item will be held. Item number forty-two, twenty-three dash R, thirty-two oh nine, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to issue Task Order Number One for RFP number listed, citywide architectural planning, design, engineering, and construction phase services, large, RFP number listed, with Dream ATL joint venture team for post-closure and landfill maintenance of city-owned landfills on behalf of the Department of Public Works in an amount not to exceed $1,700,000.0 with all contracted work to be charged to and paid from Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Ms. Greenley, you have the floor.
Good afternoon. Kanika Greenley, Department of Public Works. The purpose of this legislation is to request a task order number one for the annual contract, A and E contract with Dream ATL. It's required for our landfill post-closure care. It will include reporting, sampling, and landfill maintenance upkeep on behalf of the Department of Public Works, and then amount not to exceed $1.7 million. As you may or may not know, the Georgia Environmental Protection Division does require that we regulate our city landfills for up to, for a minimum of 30 years after they have closed. It will also address some of the concerns that were in the financial audit. We will include that as a part of this task order as well.
Questions for Ms. Greenley. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is closed.
Five VAs, zero NAs, the motion carries. The item is approved. Thank you, Ms. Greenley. Twenty-three dash R, thirty-two ten, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee adopting the 2024 update to the City of Atlanta Five-Year Financial Plan for years 2024 to 2028 and for other purposes. Motion to hold, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five VAs, zero NAs, the motion carries. The item is approved, will be held. CFO Bala, we'll see this in March, right? Is that the schedule?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, twenty-three dash R, thirty-two eleven, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the municipal clerk to place a public advertisement in a newspaper of general circulation depicting the Tax Digest milage rate, tax levy, and other information required per Section 48 dash 5 dash 32 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated and for other purposes. I'll move to approve this, seconded by Shook. Do we need any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's open the vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five VAs, zero NAs, the motion carries. That item is approved. Taking care of forty-five, we're on now to forty-six. Twenty-three R, thirty-two thirteen, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute special procurement agreement number listed, employee scheduling services to include maintenance and support with Informer Systems LLC, doing business as Safe Cities, on behalf of the Police Department pursuant to Section 2 dash 1191.1 of the City of Atlanta Code of Warnesses, for a term of five years with two one-year renewal options in an amount not to exceed $108,000.0. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. You'll step forward and tell, introduce yourself and tell us about the paper, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman Juan and council members. I'm Yolanda Pascal, Budget Management Chief for APD. This contract is to put in place a new contract for employee scheduling services for 911. It will populate the schedules by shift to ensure proper scheduling based on each employee's certifications.
Questions? Motion from Shook to approve, seconded by Hillis. There's no further discussion. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five VAs, zero NAs, the motion carries. That item is approved. All right, that takes us now to dual referred. The first item, twenty-three dash O, ten seventy-three, did come forward from CDHS. We have a substitute for that. That's this, right, Ms. Santino? Okay. Twenty-three dash O, ten seventy-three, I'll read it in, and I'll make the motion to bring forward the substitute. It's an ordinance by council members Matt Westmoreland and Jason Dozier, substituted by the Community Development and Human Services Committee, as substituted by the Finance Executive Committee. Get ready, it's a long caption. Amending that certain ordinance, number twenty dash O, seventeen seventy-nine, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on January 4, 2021, and approved by the mayor on January 11, 2021, the 2021 ordinance relating to the city's housing opportunity program so as to, one, acknowledge and approve use of an alternate benchmark interest rate in establishing the interest rate applicable to the Urban Residential Finance Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, or the Finance Authority, taxable drawdown revenue bond housing opportunity program, Series 2021, Series 2021 drawdown bond, currently authorizing the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $50 million, an extension of the commitment termination date; two, approve an amendment to the second amended and restated intergovernmental housing cooperation agreement to reflect use, reflect use of a replacement benchmark interest rate; three, provide for the enlargement of the authorized principal amount of the Series 2021 drawdown bond, and provide for a further extension of the commitment termination date and maximum maturity date subject to certain conditions precedent; four, authorize the mayor to acknowledge and agree to a First Amendment to Continuing Covenant Agreements in connection with the sale of the Series 2021 drawdown bond, reflecting the replacement benchmark rate and an extended commitment termination date; and five, authorize certain related actions all in connection with the housing opportunity program financed through the Finance Authority's issuance of the Series 2021 drawdown bond and for other purposes. Make a motion to bring forward the substitute, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. The substitute is before you.
All right, and the substitute, I understand it takes, the original substitute removes supplemental from the caption, but what does this substitute do? Can someone speak to this version and then, and to the actual paper itself?
Hey, everyone, Josh Humphries here. I also have Doug Selby. He can talk a little bit about the changes in the substitute in a second, but I'll just give an overview of what this paper is looking to do before we do that. So, in 2021, or end of 20, beginning of 21, city issued a two-part bond issuance. One was an initial $50 million drawdown bond, think like line of credit. You, you spend it, and then you pay down on what you spend on it, and then authorize up to $100 million of a full, more traditional housing opportunity bond. The first $50 million had a three-year time horizon on it, and we're coming to the end of that. So, the first key thing that we need to do is just extend that further. And the reason that we want to do that, rather than issue into the $100 million, is the line of credit reduces the amount of debt the city has to pay regularly, and it's only on what we've actually spent down on the housing bond. So, it reduces our, you know, our carrying costs for, for the bond. So, we're asking in the paper to extend that out through 2028, and then extend it up to $75 million. So, originally, it was 50 and 7, 50 and 100. We've got it validated for that. By extending the 75, we, it would allow us to have the flexibility of the drawdown and go up a little bit higher, but still never exceeds what was originally approved in this. And then, the other, well, I guess those are the main things that this would authorize to do. I know, if you've got questions about what the substitute does, Doug could probably answer those.
Yeah, I just want clarification on the substitute that we just pulled forward versus against what CDHS did on Tuesday.
Good afternoon, Chairman Juan and members. Really, the only change was to clarify in the text that the extended commitment date runs through March 1, 2024. And so, that was added to the paper. And then, there's a standard provision that authorizes, authorized reps of the city to sign under the Georgia Electronic Signature Act. So, those were the two changes. Really, the only other primary change in the, in the documents generally are to replace the LIBOR rate, which is terminating as of June 30 of this year, with the SOFR rate, which is the interest rate that'll apply to these new bonds.
Any questions for the, the team? Motion from Shook to approve on substitute, is there a second? Seconded by Winston. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five VAs, zero NAs, the motion carries. The substitute is approved. All right, item number forty-nine, twenty-three dash O, ten eighty, ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos to authorize the mayor or his designee to authorize the chief financial officer to execute a master lease agreement with JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A. for the acquisition of 100 Dodge Chargers and 100, 100 Dodge Durangos with police packages for APD fleet, and three Chevy Tahos, one GMC Yukon XL with police packages for mayor role detail on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department to execute special procurement agreements blank with Akins Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram and Hardy Family Fleet in an amount not to exceed $12,109,782.90 and for other purposes. All right, Mr. Knight.
Good afternoon, Chairman Juan, members of the committee. Courtney Knight, Chief of Treasury Debt and Investments. We're back again with another opportunity to support our public safety partners. APD identified these vehicles for sale, the 100 Durangos and 100 Chargers. There's, you know, significant demand across the country for vehicles like these from other police departments across the country. ADP came to us with an ask to expedite financing so that we could seize those cars and convert them to police cars. So, we are back again asking for approval to enter into the master lease agreement that we have with JP Morgan Chase Bank for the total sum of about 10 point, 10 point, 12.1 million dollars.
My apologies, I actually read the wrong caption. So, I was, I was looking at that blank, the revised, the substitute caption actually takes that out, and it's complete, but the dollar amount and the numbers are still the same. Questions from my colleagues? Mr. Shook?
Yeah, why was, why did this come forward without recommendation?
So, as Chair of Public Safety, I think Ms. Robinson can elaborate. There was some contention that this needed a, what do we call that thing that we always want?
I Pro.
Yes, and that we're going back and forth with the administration whether this required one because it was exercising an already existing contract. So, I think Ms. Robinson from law can fill us in.
Well, I was, I do defer to the Inspector General on whether or not an I Pro report was required here. However, that is what the, we were informed during the public safety meeting that it was the opinion at that time of the Inspector General that an I Pro report was required here, and that therefore, in accordance with the code and charter, that it would be improper for the council to move forward with it without the I Pro report. And so, because this was a dual-referred paper, it was understood that it wouldn't be a problem to move it forward to FEC where if an I Pro report were required, it could be submitted before it being, before the paper was moved to full council. There was, in fact, some discussion with the administration as to whether or not an I Pro report was necessary. From a law perspective, I would simply defer to the decision that was made between OIG and the administration as to whether or not that report was necessary.
I take it your committee had no other angst or issues?
No, that was just the only holdup, and since I was on FEC and we could address this here, we went ahead and forwarded with no recommendation so we could get that answer because Mr. Ammon from Chief Administrative Officer of APD said this was very necessary, and they really needed to move it forward. So, here we are.
I do see you.
Good afternoon. Shannon Manigault from the Office of the Inspector General. Indeed, we, when we heard the caption being read during the PSLA on Monday, we sought to stop the action because based on the original caption, indeed- indeed, the caption that Chair Juan just read, it included language identifying this as having been a special procurement. Turns out that with the substitute, this was just a matter of financing and that it is indeed not a procurement. And so it's with that additional information that it's clear that no IPRO was required.
Thank you for the clarification. So it seems like we're clear to go on this one. There is a motion from Shook. I believe Hillis seconded that to approve on substitute. No further discussion. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five A's, zero N's. The motion carries. This item is approved, amended and substituted. All right, I believe that's all the dual referred. Is that correct, Ms. Kempson, right? And I believe that's all, oh, no, we have a held, one coming off of held. Item number 65, which is 23-O-1019, there is a substitute for this. I'll read in the caption and then make the motion to bring it forward. It's a substitute ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the chief financial officer to deposit all outstanding and future funds received by the City of Atlanta from the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority pursuant to the intergovernmental agreement authorized by Resolution Number 07R-2512 in equal shares into accounts managed by the Department of City Planning and the Department of Public Works and for other purposes. Motion to bring the substitute forward, seconded by Shook. Let's open a vote to bring that forward, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. The substitute is before you.
Five A's, zero N's. Motion to bring it forward, substitute, seconded. Go ahead, if you'll tell us what this paper, introduce yourself and tell us what this paper does, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman Juan and members of the Finance Exec Committee, Janice Sutofal, Deputy, Deputy Commissioner of the Department of City Planning. This paper basically allows us to, it's a correction to the account string that revenues that we collect as part of a intergovernmental agreement with MARTA for its bus shelter advertising program. Those proceeds are split between the Department of Public Works and the Department of City Planning. And this paper is basically just changing the account that the funds that go to the Department of Public Works will be deposited into.
All right, questions? I actually do have a question. As I'm looking at the funding accounts for where they're going, I see for the Department of Planning, City Planning, it's going to essentially Streetscape Improvement and Maintenance Trust Fund. For Public Works, however, it's going to, looks like DPW Trash Troopers and the project is Chester Avenue. Is that limited to just that street? Or is it, is the application of the funds that they're receiving broader? Or is that, is that street in keeping with what the IGA designates?
I'll let Public Works answer that question.
Good afternoon, Melissa Davis, Director of Finance and Accounting for the Department of Public Works. The Chester Avenue is the facility that houses our special operations and that's why we use that particular funding source, excuse me.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions on this? If there's any, I'll make a motion to approve on substitute, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five A's, zero N's. The motion carries. That item is approved on substitute. I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a dual referred from Public Safety. It was a walk-in there. I guess the chair there is a little more lax about walk-ins. It's, it's ID number 32O-23, 23-R-3224. It's a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee supporting state legislation in the Georgia General Assembly that would establish a public safety stadium surcharge for events with at least 9,500 tickets available in order to provide additional revenue for local public safety department and for other purposes. It came out favorable from PSLA with the, there's a motion from Dustin Hillis to approve, seconded vociferously by Marcy Collier-Overstreet. Let's open that vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five A's, zero N's. That motion carries. That item is approved. I believe that takes care of all of our legislative items. Is that correct? All right, under announcements, I just want to remind everybody, we do have a work session on the 22nd. I believe it's, I don't know what time it's in here. It's with regard to the proposal to move the Ethics Office out of the Inspector General office as well as some proposed changes by the OIG. I've spoken with Law. We, we're gonna, she, she will be prepared to address their review of the proposals as well. That's all I had. Any other announcements for the good of the order? All right, seeing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much for a long.